...number seven, two thousand fifteen, to order it at six thirty P. M. There is a quorum and the agenda was properly posted. It will all rise for the pledge of allegiance and then I would ask that you please remain standing for a moment of reflection after we say the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So at this time, I'll take nominations for chairman pro temp for this meeting of December seventh, two thousand fifteen, of the village board.
And I'm going to get second.
There's been a motion and a second to nominate Jack Henrick as the chairman pro temp.
Sure.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, take it away.
All right. Item number six is public appearances and this is the public's opportunity to speak to any subject that's not a specific agenda item. Do we have anything as far as public appearances?
Well, I know all these during the budget discussion.
That's part of that.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Then at this time, we'll convene the public hearing at six, oh, six thirty five P. M. I guess we can call it. A public meeting and this is to hear interested citizens on the two thousand fifteen proposed budget for the village of Cottage Grove. And Matt, you have one?
Yeah, I can start off and then we can take individual comments afterwards. So the two thousand fifteen tax levy was three million eighty thousand six hundred fifty-three dollars. At the start of the budget process, the board gave direction to pursue zero increase of the overall tax levy with the exception of the increased debt service due to the municipal services building, which is a hundred seventy-five thousand four hundred thirty dollars. Following, following that direction, the finance personnel committee met on multiple occasions to review the budget. Department heads and committees each reviewed and made recommendations, as well as myself, the village president, and ultimately the board in a final workshop. From there, the budget that was published and is in front of you tonight was a hundred forty-eight thousand seventy-two dollar increase to the tax levy, which is an impact of sixty-six dollars to the average assessed home in the village of two hundred fifty thousand. That budget was published and that was about a month ago at this, at this point. From there, I'll kind of walk through some of the items that are in the budget, as well as some of the main reductions in the budget. There was, there's new election equipment for the two thousand sixteen presidential election. There was addition of lieutenant position, which is a non-union second-in-command for the police department. There was addition of a public works technician position, which is a general public works laborer position. There was an addition of three part-time parks maintenance employees. Addition of a financial management plan to be done by our financial advisor, Ellers. New carpeting for village hall in this room. Hazardous tree removal for Governor Taylor Park. Addition of fifteen thousand dollars to parks and playgrounds, capital improvements to bring the village's bleachers into current code, safety code compliance. Some of the notable reductions, there was a reduction of fifteen thousand dollars for salt, a reduction of five thousand dollars in legal services, a reduction of six thousand dollars of the Colonial Club contribution, and a reduction of four thousand dollars to street lighting budget. So again, in the interim during the last month from when the budget was published until where we are today, there've been a few, a few issues that have come up, or changes, I should say. One of them is Clark Corp industrial sales, which is, they're currently leasing five thousand square feet in municipal services building. They are requesting an extension of that lease. If the board so chooses to extend that extension, that would increase revenue by thirty-two thousand four ninety-six. Also, since the budget was published, we received a notice of a retiring employee, which is deputy clerk treasurer, choosing to retire at the end of the year. At the budget workshop, the board discussed potentially separating the clerk treasurer position into a full-time clerk and a full-time treasurer instead of the deputy position. Deb and I took a look at that and we're recommending hiring a temporary department, a temporary deputy clerk treasurer for the first three months of two thousand sixteen. Following that, hiring a full-time clerk. And the total impact to the tax levy of those, of those items is eleven thousand one hundred forty-two dollars. Also, the Department of Public Works was hoping to winterize the, the old public works garage. In looking into doing that, they ran into some, some issues where it would be cost prohibitive to do so. The Department of Public Works is requesting twenty-six hundred dollars be added to, to go towards utility costs for, for that building. If there's questions, there is a memo from D. P. W., J. J. Larson, he's here if you'd like to ask him any questions. So if the above changes are, if those changes are made, that would put the budget at a hundred twenty-nine thousand six hundred eighty-three dollar increase to the levy, which is a fifty-eight dollar impact to a home assessed at two hundred fifty thousand dollars. That's a, that's a reduction of eighteen thousand three hundred eighty-nine dollars from where the, where the board had published the budget. So with that, we can take some questions or move on to the public comment portion.
Several public statements. Anybody that is wishing to speak did sign a sheet. We need that for our records and hopefully we'll do this in the right order here. Betty Taylor. With the number of people, if we can keep it to about, but come on up here and give us your name, please. And if we could keep it to around three minutes per person, just for the sake of brevity.
Yep. Well, there's a few of us here from Taylor Ridge Apartments on West Lawn Drive. There are several that can't come because they don't drive at night and many, many of the residents there do not have vehicles, so there's no way they can possibly come. Last year, they had a bus that brought people to meetings and this year, for some reason, we didn't have one. But anyway, we're kind of protesting because Gail no longer will be able to, if the budget goes through, Gail will not be able to come from Colonial Club in Sun Prairie to help residents there. She's been a big help to a lot of people that need advice on their different, like insurances or their, to get help for a sick person or all different kinds of things like that. And if she don't come, people said, well, we were told we'd have to go out there and see her. People don't have a vehicle, how are they going out to Sun Prairie? Gail has been a big help to a lot of people there. And there's just no way that, how can you go out there if you don't have a vehicle? And there's a few people that live there that don't even know where Colonial Club is in Sun Prairie. So it's, we're really kind of upset that Gail can't come out, won't be able to come out and help the people with, like, their taxes and all, just on a start from the things that she does. She was very informative to me. My husband has been sick for a number of years, a number of times, and how to get help for him and what to do for this and that. And I think she's been a very big help to an awful lot of people there. So that's about all I have to say. We're just hoping that she can continue to come out and help people and the seniors. Because we're all senior citizens and it's pretty hard to know what to do with some of this, the way they've, the things are run, you don't know which is the legal and which isn't. And she's been a very big help on all that stuff. So, thank you.
Next, we have Marion Baltal.
Some of those are just registering.
Okay, please just register. Wendy Frederick, are you going to speak? Okay.
Also for the residents, we've got three large communities of elderly people in this town. Besides, I see, I deliver mail here. I see meals and wheels coming. I see other people from the Colonial Club coming to help, whether it's help getting them lawn care, help getting them help in their house, help. They need the help. And if the Colonial Club in Sun Prairie is willing to send somebody out here to do it, I don't think the village of Cottage Grove should, I don't know, put a damper on it. I mean, these people are still our residents. And there's a lot of them still in their own homes. They need the help and nobody else in this town is going to do it. We don't have a senior center. I think it's wrong to cut six thousand dollars out of the budget when I've seen such stupidity in some places in this town. That's what I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Wendy. Carol Kelly?
Well, I've got such a long speech length, I don't want to do it, but I just want everybody here to have one of these. I'm looking to try and pass them off, but if I put them here, would you please take one?
Sure.
These are the Colonial Club. This is what they do. It's, my name is Carol Kelly and I, I have used the Colonial Club really for many years. It started when I was like, I became a caregiver and I didn't realize it. You know, I was married, I had a husband, but all of a sudden, I realized I was a caregiver and it took about six years of, you know, noticing things are going wrong and all of a sudden, you realize your life has changed completely. Took six years to get a diagnosis and we had to go to Mayo Clinic to get it, but then the doctor said to me right away, he said, Carol, you cannot do it alone. So I think he had some good idea of what I was going to be facing, which I would have never known. But he was so helpful because he called the case manager at the Colonial Club, which was Gail. And I could not have made it without her help. With all, I mean, you're busy trying to take care of somebody, but then you're faced with all these things, well, where do I go for this and how do I do this? And, and the services that are provided for people, it's, it's hard to maneuver everything and to know where to go. So Gail helped me. If she didn't know the answer for something, she found the answer. And she would help me with, with people, she would put me in contact with people that could, that could help with finding what I needed. And I just think about all the seniors, I deliver the newsletter, I talk to people all the time, seniors, you know, and I just want them to know, you know, find, you know, you can call Gail now, we have the resource center, people can call, but when you have a live person that comes to your door and your life has been falling apart and she has a big smile, and that's the way the whole Colonial Club is, that the people there are helpers. They help seniors maneuver all the legal stuff that you have to go through. And I just think, please don't cut it from the seniors.
Thank you, Carol.
Thank you. Please take one of these so you'll know what they do.
Mary Morgan, Moran, I'm sorry.
What?
If I'm reading this right.
I didn't really sign up to talk, but I'm motivated by what these residents say.
Be all pretty, I'll circle you when you're going to speak.
Because this is huge. When you're young and you maneuver easily and you have the money to do all the things you need, it's not as critical. But you get into the fixed income place in life and things, health concerns or any kind of detriment comes into your life, you need somebody to guide you through it. And Gail has been just such a huge resource. Don't cut her off.
You've still got a minute and forty-five seconds. Okay, thank you. Donald Moran, did you want to speak?
That was my wife just over.
Okay.
I would say the same thing she did.
If you want to come up, you can, I just, you have to decide if you're going to speak or just register.
I would strongly recommend that you, ladies and gentlemen, don't change your budget as far as that club is concerned, because they do a lot for so many of your citizens.
Thank you. Thank you. Joanne Kessler, just registering again. Diane Shaw, did you want to speak? Just registering again, okay. Patrick Shaw, you going to speak?
My name is Patrick Shaw. I live at five seventeen Southern Greens here in the village. I've been a resident here for sixteen years and my wife and I do a lot of volunteer activities. Today, we took a lady to a medical appointment in Fit and on the Dean Clinic on the Shatree. We have seen the benefit of the Colonial Club. They do, the person they were talking about, Gail, it's Gail Brooks, she's a case manager. She's wonderful. She will help people align them with whatever facility they need. I know I've seen her, a couple of years ago, I was eligible for Medicare. She goes through the process. She's not a salesman, she's not pushing one particular product, she just explains it to the people. So many other things that the Colonial Club does for the seniors in the area is wonderful. They have, if you can get transportation up there, they have all types of activities coming up. They do help the seniors with their income tax. You get about five people in a large room and they do it for free. They do a lot of things for the community. And just looking at the members here, not many of you are seniors. You do not know the impact it will have on these people. So I'll just keep it short now, urge you, don't cut the budget for the Colonial Club. Thank you.
Good evening again, board members. Thanks to the fan club of the Colonial Club, we appreciate you being here. I'm the director, as you know, at the Colonial Club, so I'm not a resident of the village. Certainly, the last time I was here to present the information to you for the two thousand sixteen budget deliberation, I would not have entertained the notion that I'd be looking at a fifty percent cut from the village, but we are. And we called on our, the people that we serve here to help us because I think it's almost out of my hands. You know, you heard from them about the importance of the work we're doing. And sometimes I worry that there's an impression of a senior center that we're helping them sit there in the chair and rock and play bingo. And that couldn't be further from the truth. We are doing critical services that they're not going to find elsewhere. And if, if the cut comes to pass, as I told some of them, I don't exactly know what's going to happen. I can't guarantee you anything at this juncture, but if we receive a fifty percent cut, I would envision, yes, that we wouldn't be able to have Gail do office hours in the village. I would expect we would still provide services, case management in particular, to people who can make it to the Colonial Club. But as, as she said, so many people don't have the transportation and while we have a transportation program, we're not allowed to bring people in for that. We can only use transportation to bring people in for the meal program or the adult day center. Beyond that, my guess would be we continue to, we're, we're down a case manager right now, we have three, and one just resigned. So Gail's extra busy, she couldn't be here tonight because she's trying to get everybody into their Medicare Part D supplements before the deadline comes in. So we'd probably then also have to sort of start prioritizing. And I'm not sure where the village of Cottage Grove residents' request would end up, certainly not at the top of the pile. So I hope you'll reconsider and sustain our funding at the twelve thousand that it is. And I'd be happy to answer any question you might have.
That was my question, since you're the director, does any trustee have questions for Bob?
I have a number of questions. So the last time you were here, you stated that services would not change because this is a donation. So just to be very clear, this isn't a budget cut or a funding operation to your company, it's a donation to the Colonial Club and services to Cottage Grove would not change. So you're now changing that and saying that services would change?
If I said that in November, I misspoke because, yeah, there's no way we can continue to do the services we do at a fifty percent reduction from your, from the village. So I apologize for that.
Okay.
It would affect services.
Okay. How often are you coming to Cottage Grove currently?
Melody, do you know how often Gail's here?
I think she comes at least once a month.
Once a month to Taylor Ridge for case management type stuff.
I bet she spends a lot more time on the phone.
She also goes to people's homes here.
In Bank of Sun Prairie.
Right, she's had hours in Bank of Sun Prairie.
Oh, yes, and the Bank of Sun Prairie as well.
Here.
In addition to, yeah, here, here in the village. I think we also do some work with, she does work with, at the Hometown Pharmacy as far as the med review business goes on. And then, of course, this is just case management. It wouldn't affect the meal program because that's funded through the county and the Older Americans Act, so we'd still be delivering the home-delivered meals and we'd still be doing supportive home care mainly because that, that's a private pay operation.
Okay. Are you currently doing any fundraising efforts in Cottage Grove?
No.
We have, we have asked some of the businesses in Cottage Grove to support our fundraising, like our Strawberry Fest and our Ale Fest, we have requests out to some of those organizations, so.
We have two special events a year, one in June and one in November.
Anything else? No, Alex, go if you have some.
You got some of mine. Yeah, it wasn't described very well in November that Gail's budget was directly tied to our donation. So how much, I mean, there's clearly a gap in Cottage Grove for these type of services and I don't think anybody questions that. I don't think anybody's questioning the, the value of the services being provided. Prior to Cottage Grove starting the donation, was no one visiting Cottage Grove?
I, I can't speak to that, truly. I've, I've been there since two thousand seven.
I think it's a relatively new development, two thousand and seven, I think we were already doing some of the visits to Cottage Grove, at least having office hours here in town because the population was growing so much in Cottage Grove, so the need was here at that time, so it's just been expanding ever since.
The need for me was started in two thousand and three. Gail's visiting me at my home.
No, the need has always been in Cottage.
The need's always been there, right? Okay. So that's prior to the donation. So then, and then you said you were going to prioritize us based on our donation to be down. Is that really, is that the case then? Because we're not?
Well, yeah, I mean, if we have, okay, so the city of Sun Prairie just finished their budget, they gave us a ten thousand dollar increase for two thousand sixteen. So if it came down to, you know, I've got this many case management requests from the city of Sun Prairie and this many from the village of Cottage Grove, yeah, absolutely, I'd have to prioritize like that.
So that's happening anyway, regardless of the donation, you're prioritizing Sun Prairie over us anyway?
No.
That's what you just said.
Well.
They're giving more money, so you're prioritizing Sun Prairie over Cottage Grove.
Then we are accommodating everybody in the village of Cottage Grove that we can at this point with the donation that, that you have given us or the contribution. I think if it's lessened, we'll have to do something to adjust to that.
So services will change? Okay.
Last question. What was it based on?
Could we have, as you speak, if you could come up and just identify yourself? Just so we know who's asking the question again. So we create a record.
Okay, Wendy Frederick. And I just want to know, what was the fifty percent based on, fifty percent cut based on? Or do, as far as I'm aware, from delivering mail, we have an explosion of elderly people that we didn't have before.
Pretty sure that came out of a budget workshop.
And all of a sudden, we're talking about cutting services.
It's in the, it's in the minutes. Do you want to talk to it or?
Actually, it came out of finance, out of the finance committee.
If you want to look it up, but if anybody else has any questions for Bob, I mean, I don't know. Anybody else?
How much does Gail make a year?
Thirty, it's upper thirties, like thirty-seven, thirty-eight thousand plus benefits.
I don't want to start a conversation, but I'm, I'd just like to show a hand. Is Gail the most important part of the Colonial Club to y'all? I'd want yes or no, just showing.
I think she helped everybody in, in our apartment complex pretty much. You had to have an appointment to get to see her and then a lot of days she, you were unable to, to see her that day, you had to wait for her next visit because she was so busy.
And I, for what it's worth, Bob, I think this is my, tell how long I've been here. Been here a long time. I have always been under the impression that this was a donation and not linked to services. So I, there's a miscommunication somewhere.
Anything else?
I'm good.
Okay. First of all, the, I think, can you put a dollar amount to the services that Sun Prairie or the Colonial Club is providing to the village of Cottage Grove citizens? With that, what I distributed to you in November, the hours of case management and all of that, case management is at twenty-five dollars an hour and with a hundred and ninety hours to the village this year, that's forty-seven hundred and fifty dollars. What is the value of the services that Colonial Club provides to the citizens of the village of Cottage Grove?
Four thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
For case management. That's a hundred and ninety hours at twenty-five dollars an hour.
Is it including the bank hours as well as the home visits and also the whole one night, including all the hours?
Do you have an idea, Melody? And this is Melody Riddle, our director of services.
She's next on the list to speak.
Yeah. Melody, why don't you go ahead and come up and sit aside?
If you want to sit up here with Bob, maybe, you're both from Colonial Club, is that?
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, maybe that would be helpful.
I'm not sure if it would include all of the, just the general information referral. I think the hundred and ninety are actually case managed clients that turn into more than just a phone call or a referral.
She visits with, if you have a problem, she sits right down with you, your family or whatever you need.
And when we saw? And when we saw the need, as Melody mentioned, it, it just happened that that's, we assigned Gail. Any three of our case managers could be doing the position and doing it as great as Gail. I know y'all love Gail and so do we.
I was going to say, none of those other people's groupies came up.
The Adult Day Center, you had 2,243 hours of service this past year. We charge 11.65 an hour. So that equals over $26,000 right there for the Adult Day Center.
And how many residents of Cottage Grove are being served by that?
I can't tell you exactly how many in the Adult Day Center. Again, we had 57 residents in the total services through case management.
So do you think it would be fair to, a fair statement to say that the Village of Cottage Grove is served vastly by this, this Gail, as case management? Is that, is that the majority of the services received by the residents of Cottage Grove?
No, meals. We do almost 2,000 meals every year.
To the village?
Mm-hmm. And they're either, 1,600 of those 2,000 are delivered to their homes here in the village. 384 of them actually are village residents who are mobile and can come to the congregate site in Sun Prairie. And so then they're, they may take part in other activities. They may stop and see a case manager while they're there. Transportation is still pretty big, over 7,000 miles. We lounged on our buses this past year, going back and forth between Sun Prairie and Cottage Grove. And then our supportive home care, we had 228 hours of service for village residents at 22.50 an hour. That's 5,000, just over $5,000. So we estimated close to, over $55,000 is what, and it's not going to be precisely, you know, please don't hold me down to every penny. But again, that's the fees that are assessed or the going rate for case management actually is, we've cut by about 10 bucks. I think it's closer to $40 an hour for, for profit case management services.
I appreciate that, but we are accounted, held to every penny, so we need to know those numbers. We are accountable for every penny of taxpayer dollars, so kind of need to know those numbers.
Thank you. I, just so everybody knows, I did receive a few phone calls from, from seniors who are receiving those services. One, one elderly lady, 90 years old, was just virtually pleading with me to do whatever I could to retain the funding for, for Colonial Club. And I, I will tell you, I've learned a lot in the last three weeks by the various communications that have, have come our way. And I understand, I think part of what is going on here has been the issue with calling it a donation. And I think we need to look at it more as we're paying for services. And, and when you look at what the dollar amount of services that the citizens of Cottage Grove are receiving, that's a pretty good return on investment. If we're paying 12,000 for over $50,000 worth of services, that's, that's a pretty good return on taxpayer dollar.
And I can finish. I, I just didn't get to all of them. Supportive home care is 228 hours at 22.50 an hour. So that's $5,130.
What was the first part? I'm sorry.
228 hours of supportive home care at 22.50 an hour, $5,130. Meals, 384 at the club at $7.65 a meal is $2,931.
And that's separate from the 2,000 meals that are?
And meals that are delivered are 1,637 at 7.65 an hour. And we're able to keep that at 7.65 because volunteers deliver it. That's $12,223. And then transportation, 7,001 miles at 50 cents per mile is $3,500. For a total of $54,964.95. And actually, I'm reading this from the 2014 numbers and I recalculated through the end of October of 2015. And those, that total number, and I can forward that on to you, Jennifer, and the rest of your colleagues, is now over 60,000 for the 2015 numbers.
Directly impacting the Village of Cottage Grove?
I'm sorry?
Directly affecting our residents?
Yes.
I just want to be, I want to be 100% clear.
Do you have any questions?
The only question I have is at what point can we make a motion on the current budget for this item?
We have, I think we have to consider that as a package, Matt, is that correct?
Well, after, feel there's enough discussion, you're close to public hearing correctly. And then, then there'd be a discussion on the resolution and what the tax levy would be, so you could discuss it further at that time.
The only question I would have, Bob, is you mentioned Sun Prairie besides Cottage Grove. Any other municipalities that you serve? I guess, what are they doing? Are they?
We haven't heard anything from the town of Sun Prairie or the town of Cottage Grove. So I, I'm not expecting any change from them. We also receive funds from Bristol, Burke, Marshall, Medina.
You had mentioned in the November meeting that there were a couple of governments, like they were, cut their donation altogether. Did you remove services from those areas?
With the exception of the meals, they have gotten to, kind of like what I was saying, not quite the priority. But because we've had a small increase in the information and referral business because of the opening of the Aging and Disability Resource Network, we were able to handle it because it was from a smaller community.
Thank you again for coming out and, and speaking. And thank you at Gail's for, for coming out as well. This obviously struck a chord in the community. I, you know, I'm quite frankly on the fence both ways because there's things on both sides. I think Harvey's probably right by the term donation. It kind of gives misleading face of kind of what we're even looking at.
It's what we call it in our land.
Right. So I, I struggle with that. You know, that if, if this is truly a paid-for service, then it should be disclosed that way to the public. It's something to be looked at for sure. You know, obviously shows that Cottage Grove needs these services, so hopefully it's struck a chord within the community to go out and donate to these services and give back. Are any of those programs that you discussed are unpaid items? Are they all paid items for donating?
No, like case management, there's no fee associated with that. We do encourage people to donate if they can for the service they have received, but no, there isn't a set fee. And I guess that could be a consideration for us in the future is maybe we'll have to, you know, the county has talked to us, all of the senior centers in Dane County about, is this something we, the county should impress upon all the senior centers to do is to begin assessing a fee for case management. And what we keep coming back with is we're not giving case management services to the wealthiest seniors in the county who can afford those kinds of, of fees associated with the service.
My, I guess my fear is if we continue to, to call it a donation, those services could be cut anyway. So it has to be a little bit more clear to the public and kind of how it's spelled out in a sense on that side of things. I'm a member of the Cottage Grove Chamber of Commerce and one of the most important things that they're pushing right now is keeping these services in Cottage Grove. So having these hours like you're having at the Bank of Sun Prairie and coming here and servicing because it's that important to have that service here.
Do other communities call it paid-for service or donation or investment or, I mean, what are they?
I.
I'm just curious.
I don't know. We, you know, I, I usually just ask, I think in the letter, for your consideration for your allocation for 2016.
I, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I just want to piggyback on what Kyle was going to say. I would very much like to, to hear your ideas for expanding your hours in, in the Village of Cottage Grove. I 100% agree with what he, what he said. And clearly, these people appreciate having Gail here or whomever, one of your three, but it sounds like Gail's the favorite. I mean, we are a large community. Clearly, these people see a value in the service. If we're, if we're giving this money, let's have her here.
Well, as you might guess, everybody from the county to United Way to other municipalities have found it necessary to cut our budgets. Right now, the Dane County Human Services has been pretty steady. No increases, but at least we haven't lost money. United Way, we're losing, their priority for older adults is at the bottom of their agenda for change. We have an aging building. I've tried to save money every year since I've been here to help meet the needs of our building that's in need of ADA compliant bathrooms, insulation. And I mentioned that in my, what I sent in November with the hopes that maybe we'd get some small increases so we could put some of that towards that. But that's not happening. So whatever I'm getting, it's really just going back into the same service levels that we're at.
So our donation, even at its full amount, doesn't guarantee that our citizens are getting the services that they're, they've all come out here to.
Well, we certainly haven't heard any complaints yet that we're not meeting their needs, but that remains, yeah, it certainly could be an issue.
For, for future years, could we, could we maybe get some sort of detailed service agreement tied to a dollar amount? Like a, a minimum for, would that, just a suggestion?
Just to formalize it a little more?
Yeah. Yeah, because this don't, this whole idea of a donation and a 501(c)(3), that is, that's tricky because there's lots of great 501(c)(3)'s just in this community. I mean, the PTOs are all worthy, the Education Foundation is, where there's a lot of 501(c)(3)'s that are worthy of a donation. So we need to, we need to figure out what exactly this is that we're giving you and what that looks like in the future and how it's directly tied to our folks. Because that's, that's who we're here for. We're here for our folks.
And what was the, what, if I remember, there was a, a number attached to the number of senior citizens in the Village of Cottage Grove, something like 760 or something?
670.
670?
I got that from suburbanstats.org.
670 residents are?
Residents over the age of 60. Over the age of 60.
That live here?
That, yeah.
Or that use the service?
That are potential, that are, they're potential clients.
600 of them drive and can't do this.
Yeah. Matt, I'd be happy to, to do something and I don't know if that's, I mean, however you'd want to work that out, if you want me to generate something in the future, if we want to work together on what that would look like to meet your requirements, yes, we'd be happy to.
I think something that would make it easier for people to understand, not really a donation or it's a payment for services or something, I don't know how, how that would look. Alex, do you have any?
Yeah, I guess I got a couple of closing things. I'm not sure how we're going to wrap this up and move on.
Well, Mary's still, Melody's still on the sheet if she has anything to add, so.
Do you want to go first? Do you want to?
Anything else, Melody?
I, I had some more stories that I wanted to share with you. I'm not sure you need any more stories. I have 10 more that for residents who weren't able to come tonight, I'd be happy to share with you their story. Do you want to hear them?
You can email them.
I don't think, I don't think that the value of the service is being questioned. I mean, it's, it's clear that these people appreciate what you do.
I think it's the way the communication is coming across. It feels like it's a miscommunication. On one side, it's coming across as a donation and we're giving a donation and the services won't change. And to the public, it's being delivered as these services are going to be cut and Gail's no longer going to be able to come here. And that's a big disconnect. And so trying to get to the middle of that disconnect and clarify is very important. And that's why we have these meetings, obviously. I think also it kind of stems, you know, positive outreach. I don't, we haven't finalized, but I believe that some services were added to Parks and Rec for senior services.
We're talking about that too.
Yeah.
What? What is it?
Well, we're still working on it. Well, we just, we just added it, literally.
It's proposed in the budget.
It's proposed in the budget for next year.
I thought you said Parks and Rec is not going to help them with their day-to-day things. I thought you asked one question. Donation budget lines, do you have?
This is the only one.
This is the only one.
This is it.
There's nothing inside of Cottage Grove that's donated to and Sun Prairie. The Colonial Club is the one donation item that we currently have on our budget.
And that's why, and like we said, that's why there appears to be some sort of disconnect because it's not really a donation. It's, 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 it's a ser, we're paying for services that are being given, provided to our citizens. And, and we have to, going forward, I, I mean, when we get done with the public hearing, going forward, we'll have that discussion, I think, of how do we cover the 2016 and going forward.
Right. Alex, do you have any?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if it's around or we're going to talk about it later, but I mean, I'll just put it out there now. I mean, there's obviously, there's a service. This is, obviously, everybody enjoys the benefit that's provided and that's not what's in question. I had a lot of positive emails as well from, coming from the organization of the positive impact. I've also talked to a lot of people that said they would prefer to donate their money on their own and use their funds in, as a line item tax deduction, which they're not capable of doing right now. We're basically taking the money from the residents and telling them we're going to donate it to the club. In the minutes, we, we clearly have that, and Kyle restated it, the remanded services would not change, they're still going to happen. And everybody was still in the room when that happened, that statement was made and it was not challenged and it made it in here. And whether it's $6,000 or $12,000, it doesn't sound like in any case we're guaranteed any services. So if we're going to draw up a contract, which is probably what it should be, is not a blanket donation. If there is a gap of services and if the taxpayers choose, the referendum or we choose for them, that this is a service that we're, we're willing to make ourselves pay for and it's a good service, this has nothing to do with that, then it shouldn't be a donation. And then we should give, you know, we should cover the cost of the services and, and still allow people to donate and promote, you know, whether it's a charity event, you know, the Sun Prairie, we let people know it's there, or let's host some stuff here as well and create the community awareness of the positive benefit of this organization. If you Google 501(c)(3) Cottage Grove, you end up with like 40 hits at least. Now, I didn't research them all. There's, there may be some overlap, there may be some that don't exist anymore. And those are places that are, they're here within our boundaries that we can donate to and will provide a positive impact to residents of Cottage Grove. The government also donates money all the time. And, and there, there's the, the feds, right? We're shooting things to Mars, we're doing cancer research, we're, we're providing, you know, clean energy, stuff like this, right? And it's all done through grants. And what it does is it gives the ability for people, startups, people of long terms to apply for the available funds and, and receive the benefit of those. And it gives really everybody an equal playing field for everyone to enjoy the benefits of the excess money that the government's been taking from us. And again, there's a lot of organizations that are worthy of that. And, and potentially someone's going to see the need that, hey, this is something that is needed here in the community and, and it can be started up here locally. The services that we're looking to provide at Parks and Rec won't cover the whole gap. And we knew that. But it's a start into building a system here where we can service our, our residents locally. So there's, there's really a bunch of, it's all good, the money goes to a worthy cause and that's never been the issue. The question is how we've been doing it throughout the past, how it started, and is it really the right thing to do? And, and that is the hard job that we have. Our job is And that is the hard job that we have. Our job is to maintain the streets, maintain the trash, make sure that the streetlights all work, and make sure that services are provided to our residents as well. But to make it clean and transparent to everybody, you know.
I agree. I think there's a disconnect between what it's been called and how it's.
And what it is.
Very much so.
Anything else for Colonial Club or for these folks?
Jack, when you do declare the public hearing closed, you should make reference to there were some handouts at our table? And just incorporate them into the record.
And the emails?
Yeah. I know I forwarded at least one email.
Yep, I saw a couple of them. Okay. All right, that's everything on Colonial Club. Is there any other topics besides Colonial Club for the budget? Other than, I'll reference these emails and these handwritten letters that we have for Boris tonight, but anything besides Colonial Club?
That would be direct, I mean, wouldn't that be directed to the public?
I think so. Any, is everybody here for anything other than Colonial Club, I guess? Let's go that way. If not, thank you very much. Okay.
So you can close the public hearing?
Yep.
Do you need a motion?
Yeah.
Do you need to discuss the changes that Matt went through, the other issues that are in the budget now?
Close the hearing first. If we make decisions, you can close the public hearing.
So Jennifer made a motion.
Yes.
A second. Okay, a motion from Jennifer and second by Kyle then to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, thank you. And then, anything more from Matt or me on the budget?
No.
I think if the process worked well, then the budget workshop was really productive. It seemed to ferret out a lot of stuff. You know, I think even Jennifer, you sat in on a few that have dragged on budget workshops.
Say that again.
On budget workshops, ones that have dragged on and.
18 hours?
Yeah.
One day?
Bring along.
And then back?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Terrible.
No other discussion then? We're at item number nine, which is discussing, consider Resolution 2015-10, a resolution adopting the 2015 budget and authorizing the clerk treasurer to levy taxes.
Is it the 2016?
That's 2016, though, right?
Yes. No, the resolution is this year?
The resolution is the 2015 resolution. The 2016 budget.
Oh, you have 2016.
The 2015 taxes payable in 2016 for the 2016 budget.
Just so we're all on the same page. Gotcha.
So that's a fight, though.
So should we talk about Julie's retirement and the potential of hiring someone to replace her and make?
There's a lot of things to be talked about.
Do we want to do that now, Matt? Because that will impact the budget, so if you want to give us some background? You know, our clerk treasurer, deputy clerk treasurer?
Yeah, she's the deputy clerk treasurer, and our thought was to fill that position temporarily as soon as possible for several months, and then hopefully in April, hire a full-time clerk, but not, but not hire a deputy clerk treasurer. And then, in turn, Deb would be a full-time treasurer and not have clerk duties anymore, starting in April or May.
So just shuffle around the duties.
Yeah, and the impact of doing that on the tax levy was about $11,000.
Okay. So, do we want to talk about the whole budget then, at this point? Is that, is that what we're open to?
We should take it line by line.
Because some of this will relate. So one thing I would consider to address perhaps this scenario for the board is to eliminate, for instance, the carpet in this room. And just have a good cleaning. So that's a line item, sizable line item. That I also could consider, some of the other things that our citizens have brought up tonight around.
I agree the carpet is in bad shape, but I mean, if we drop that item, then we can take care of the Colonial Club.
Yes, that's my intent.
That's kind of the line of it.
When's the last time it been cleaned, Matt?
Actually, I, this is, there's no padding under here. It's cement. I've been told it can only be cleaned through a foam dry cleaning. I don't know. Correct me if I'm wrong, anybody else who knows anything about carpet. And then it's not real effective.
And how old is this carpeting?
I think, I don't know if it's original.
I think so.
I think it's original in 1963.
No, it's, well, 93, 93.
1893.
I mean.
It's great.
So, was that a motion, John? I mean, is that what we're?
No, it's a thought. It's non-eligible.
I'm not going to tell you.
I mean, how do we amend the budget, I guess is the question.
I mean, this is the last chance before.
Make a motion to, you could have, so right now, the the tax levy is at $3,228,725. That's the published levy. If you choose to extend the lease with Clerk Court, that would give us $32,496 of revenue.
Which is an item later on in the agenda, correct?
It's later on in the agenda, but I mean, if it's not included in the budget, then we just want to address it at that time. So anyway, if you incorporate the three changes since the workshop, which would be the lease, the change in the deputy clerk treasurer clerk position, as well as the utilities for the old garage, that would lower the tax levy from the budget workshop by $18,389.
And that gets you to the final number, I'm sorry, the $58 per household, right? That's the final number you read earlier.
Correct. That gets us, that gets us to the $3,210,336.
As a procedural matter, you ought to make a motion to adopt the budget, and then you're going to amend it.
So I think, I think what you want to do is have a main motion on the floor, and then you can amend from there.
Motion to adopt the budget.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the budget for 2016. Any discussion?
Well, yeah.
Whether there will be.
We're going to have discussions, right?
So all in favor, say aye?
No, we got to discuss.
Just settle down, Jack.
He doesn't want an 18-hour meeting.
Yeah, we're ready for a minute.
So how much was the carpet?
$11,000.
No, um, $9,000.
We already took the $2,000 out.
The $2,000 was.
So now we're down to nine.
Nine.
So can I just interject something here? If we leave the carpeting, if we leave everything the same that we had in the original budget and make the changes, replace Julie, and incorporate the lease, and then the issue from JJ, we have $18,000 less dollars, or more dollars than what we had originally planned on.
Yeah, well, the levy is reduced.
The levy is less, yes. I'm sorry, that wasn't clear.
Yeah.
So, in theory, we have, we don't have to cut the carpet to potentially reinstate the Colonial Clubs.
Yeah, I mean, there's room in the levy for whatever the board determines to include, so.
I just wanted to make that clear.
Yeah.
So the original, right, so the original levy was $66, additional assessed on a house of 250. With those changes, we're down to $58.
Correct.
You still have $18,000 to work with?
From our original standard.
You have as much money as you want. You could take it all from everybody. I mean, in the end, we could take it all. I know. I have no issue, I mean, I think we, obviously, we know Colonial is the big issue here. And I really don't want to see the levy impacted through the way we have it listed as a donation. So if we can, I don't know if it's possible to take it out of general fund, which means it doesn't impact the levy.
It does impact the levy if it's taken out of general fund.
Well, the general, if it comes out, right.
We can change the line item to say anything.
You can change, just change the, are we just going to talk about it, or are we going to dance around it for a while?
Michael, talk to them.
The other big thing is they're not guaranteeing services, and that's what really bugs me. I mean, he was here to let, you were here last week or last month and said, everything's going to stay the same. And we clearly stated that. And now all of a sudden, it's changing. And now Sun Prairie is giving an extra $10,000. And basically, I feel threatened that if we don't donate, we're not getting anything.
Well, but that's the way it works. If you cut, if you cut the budget, you should expect less.
But I can expect less now. There's no guarantee we're getting any services. There is no guarantee on the table that even if we donate, that we're going to get help.
Well, I think that's the crux of the problem. We need to have something formal. And it's probably a little late in the game to say that now.
For this year.
Exactly, for 16, it's late.
On the table for next year.
For next year.
I want, if we're going to give money, or if we're going to pay money, that's what we're really doing, we're paying money. I want some sort of guarantee that our people are getting the services that they want.
Well, there's nothing that says that you can't direct, I mean, when you do pass the budget, that there's also a direction to staff, to get an agreement with the services that you are expecting for the dollars that you're giving.
And I would emphasize that we do have contracts with other 501(c)(3)'s.
With Jay's folks over there? Do we have a contract?
We have a contract with the fire department.
Contract with the fire department, absolutely. We do this all the time.
I go back to, it was a disconnect in the way that it was delivered and the way we sit tonight, and having to process that and make that decision. I don't want to call it a donation, because it's no longer a donation.
We can put in whatever.
So I don't want to see those services cut. It's obviously a need. Hopefully, that shows and strikes some court out there for people to continue to bring those services here additionally. But I think, now that we're going to the position that this is a paid-per-service item, there's kind of a warning that if somebody comes into Cottage Grove and puts in these services, that.
Colonial gets cut?
That's right. It's no longer sent outside our community. It's sent inside our community, you know.
What we have to remember is that we are, while we are paying an organization that resides outside of Sun Prairie, we're actually paying for the services for our citizens, even though it is outside of the village limits. And in fact, I, you know, I am of the opinion, I mean, given the fact that we're getting roughly four or five times greater value out of our donation, I would recommend that we increase it rather than decrease it. I heard you got to be careful with that, because the funds he's talking about are also coming at the county level for the food and other things. Even though they're going to citizens here. Some of them. Some of them. Granted, there is a lot of bank for the buck, but.
When you do a donation, you throw the money from everywhere into a pot, and you run a budget off of that pot. So it's hard to say that this service is going to get cut here if you don't donate to this pot, especially considering Sun Prairie was just told that they raised their pot. So what are they adding then? If we're going to talk about minusing all of Cottage Grove over a small donation cut?
It's not, $6,000 in the scheme of things.
But they just got $10,000 more, so in my mind, you're adding $4,000 in services. So you should look at it as a whole, and we're not going to disclose those numbers as a whole. We're getting bits and pieces cut all the way down and making it.
I think the answer is putting it into some writing form for.
Being transparent.
It can't be that hard.
We can't do that for 16 because of the time crunch in terms of the budget.
What do we do for this year right now?
I think amending it with the understanding that we got equal to or greater services than we did last year would cover that for this year and moving forward. It kind of hurt on how we expect to see these things.
And I want to plan for growth, a bigger presence in the village.
Right. Yeah, and that, I mean, that sounds great to me, because it would be great for them to like have a true satellite office here. I mean.
And you'll get significantly a lot more money out of the Cottage Grove's regular donations if you host an event here. I mean, they're talking about these two different festivals and.
Both of which are held in Sun Prairie.
Yeah, would love to host the table.
And those support our festivals, too. So it's a double win.
And when we have room now, not at the other room. I mean, if they're going to do something indoors.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes.
There's your answer again.
So.
A motion to cut the carpet and go back.
There's a motion on the table.
Or a motion to amend.
So we're going to.
No, there's a motion on the table to approve the levy. And now, if you wanted to amend it.
Need to vote it down.
Someone needs to, no, you don't need to vote it down. Just, someone needs to amend, make an amendment and a second, and then the board needs to vote on each amendment.
Okay, amend the budget to reinstate the $6,000 to the Colonial Club, changing the name of that line item to a payment. And direct staff to create a document outlining discussed expectations.
As payment for services, okay? Okay, we have a second. Okay, we have a second. Motion and a second then to reinstate funding for the Colonial Club with the change that it become a working document outlining the services and then listed as a payment for services rather than donation.
Now we can have another amendment?
Yep.
Well, first, let's do it this one.
Okay.
We have, we had a motion and a second out there ready to approve the budget.
Right, but now.
That just sat there with no vote. Now we have a motion and a second by two other people for an amendment.
Yeah.
So I have two motions that are open still.
Right.
We got a.
So what do I do with the first one, to approve the budget?
Hold it.
Hold it.
Hold it.
It's here on my desk.
So we need to vote on, we need to vote on the first amendment.
Yes.
Okay. You heard the motion and the second then? All in favor, say aye.
I have a little more discussion. So are we leaving the money that was donated to Parks and Rec for those services? Monks? Because that was kind of a trade-off to.
Yeah, I think we should.
I think for this year, now that we've got this straightened out and know what we need to do, otherwise we don't have more amendments. I mean, if you're.
I have our amendment, too.
Yeah, just as a point, I had it in my notes for that. It wasn't necessarily services. It was senior program.
Senior program.
It's a kind of program.
So the gap, I think you're looking at only like $3 added to the levy for that.
That's right. $6,000 would be $3.
$3 bucks. So you're looking at a $3, just to put it in perspective, you're looking at $3.
Well, and we're down $18,000 from our original rebies. So now we're down to $12,000. So I think we have, I mean, I don't need to tell you what to do, but.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, well.
Zeroing price would be the best.
I guess we'll call that question on the first amendment then. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Are there any other amendments then?
Yes.
So then, the next amendment would be a move that we eliminate the carpet for the village to offset some of these other things. We continue to keep the levy down, and we try to do a good cleaning, whatever recommendation that is.
I would second that. The, I would, might add to that, that look into the possibility of maybe a runner in the main entrance here to this room.
Okay.
Kyle, beginning of the meeting, just throw your body down.
Yeah.
Okay.
So how much money would we have been budgeted for this room?
There was nine.
No, I know. I mean, how much would remain?
For cleaning, it's probably at least $1,500, I'm sure, for something.
Oh, my gosh, at least, if we have to do a specialized cleaning.
You might as well do the whole building. I mean, that side.
If they're here.
Are you sure you want to make that kind of investment into?
I really disagree. I think we should, this is original.
Okay, we have an amendment. Do we have a second to the amendment?
A second.
Okay, now we can.
You're going to need to keep up, Lee.
He's actually trying to get us all ass.
I just tested.
Yeah.
I really disagree. I think we have the money. I think, I think we, it's time. You can't nickel and dime it forever.
It continues to get pushed off, and it's obviously needed, and it's the risk of spending money on something that.
It gets cut every year.
I guess my question to the other board members would be, what is the potential for Village Hall moving to a different location in a few years?
The option, the floor's nasty, so what you do is you pull it up, you polish the concrete, and you have a polished floor. That way, if you spill something, you just mop it up. You know, fixing the problem of people dropping stuff doesn't get fixed by replacing the carpet. But after 30, 64 years of, this is what it looks like. So.
20.
25 years. So, you know, we do have an obligation to maintain the building. We got to make sure light switch covers are put on, and the thermostat's work, and all those other things, so.
I think the idea was to hopefully do squares.
Carpet tile?
Yeah.
That would be a lot better product, because it's a lot easier to fix, pull up one tile.
I mean, exhibit A, folks.
I think carpet tile makes a lot of sense, and it's guaranteed to take care of the problem rather than risking and not taking care of the problem and then spending more money at a later date. You know, and it gives off the right image to the public as well.
Right.
It's hard, you know, to spend money on that type of stuff, but it has to be done. I mean, the weeds gotta be pulled out front, the trees gotta be trimmed.
All right. So, the motion was then to do the carpet replacement?
The first motion was to cut it.
Cut.
Cut it, okay.
First motion, second was to cut it.
All right, well, we have to, if the first motion was to cut the carpet, and we had a second on that, right?
Yes, we did.
Okay, well, then I need to vote on that. So, the motion to cut the carpet from the budget, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion failed.
Yep, so the motion failed. And the next motion was to do the carpet.
No, the carpet's already in it.
It's already in it.
The carpet's in the budget, so we don't need that motion, so we're still now at one amendment, right?
Yes.
All right, any other amendments to entertain?
Well, I would make the amendment, motion to amend the budget to include the hiring of someone to replace Julie. As discussed?
That's part of the new budget. That's part of the new budget.
That's already in the...
It is?
At that point, if we're, you could, you could, someone could make a motion to set the levy, we would be at three million, two hundred sixteen thousand, three hundred thirty-six dollars.
I don't understand how that was part of the original budget, because it wasn't part of the original budget.
It's not.
No, but that was in the motion.
It's the...
Oh!
Yeah.
It would just be setting the levy, and, you know, you could include in there with amendment to include the Clark Corp lease, the hiring plan for deputy clerk treasurer, and ultimately, a full-time clerk, and then the utilities change for...
Yeah, because I, the motion was not to include these. I made the motion, it was to accept the budget, and these were not in the budget, so...
So, somehow they have to get included.
Actually, the way it was stated was fifty-eight dollars at the end of that motion, correct?
No, I made the motion.
When you said, Lee, when you had them approve the budget, was that to approve the resolution?
No.
Okay.
So, we would need...
So, for clarity, I would, let's clarify what is included and what's not.
So, Jen, a motion to approve basically the end of page two budget. Not the resolutions of the...
Not the changes since our workshop.
Right.
That was the orig, that was the original motion, was to...
Approve the budget.
To approve the budget.
Page two, page two and one.
It came out of the budget workshop, I would agree with that, yes.
Is that correct?
So, then we need a motion to adopt...
Hold on.
Sorry, please.
That's what I'm putting it in here as.
Okay, that's just what I want to clarify for the record, because that's not the way I understood the motion, sorry.
Okay, so I'm gonna make the motion, and you can disagree with it if you like, to approve...
Wait, you already got a motion on the floor to, and so, if you want to amend it, that's fine, or you want to vote on the main motion.
So, the main motion...
So, we need to include these things.
No, Jennifer, the...
You have to amend it. You have to amend it.
Amend it with those, that's what I tried to do, and they stopped me.
Yeah.
I tried to make a motion to...
No, first, when I first started talking, that's what I was trying to do, and they told me I couldn't do that.
But then they came to, they understood where your original motion was.
No, not everybody, I don't think. The, as I understand the original motion, it was the budget that came out of the workshop, and in order to include the changes...
We need to make an amendment.
We need to either make, yeah, exactly, that's the best way, so...
Okay, so I'm gonna make that amendment, to include items one, two, and three, the Clark Corp industrial sales lease, the replacing of Julie, and the memo from JJ.
And the memo from JJ, yeah, okay.
Second.
All right.
God, that was painful.
It is, over here. Okay, so we have that motion to include the Clark Corp, replacing the deputy clerk treasurer with the scenario Matt mentioned, and the memo from Public Works. All in favor?
Discussion?
Discussion?
Is fair enough.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? There you go.
Okay, now you have a main motion and two amendments.
So, I call the question.
Okay. Further?
The big question.
Thank you. Okay?
Jeff, you want to read the main motion and the amendments?
So, my first...
No, we'd have to start over?
Um...
Save off.
The main motion that was out there that's still open, live, is to approve the budget as it stood at the end of the November...
Workshop. Workshop.
Tenth, two thousand fifteen workshop. There's an amendment that has already passed...
Which is?
To add carpeting, no, to ink, to move the Colonial Club services payment to twelve thou, to its original amount of twelve thousand.
Correct, plus coming up with...
And three amendments that you had.
And, yes, and direct staff to come up with and agree.
And then the second amendment?
Was when the Jennifer just made.
Clark Corp.
To include Clark Corp, hiring of a clerk, replace Julie, and the utilities, Public Works.
Everybody good with that?
Clear.
So, did, so the third, the second amendment was voted on?
And that's approved.
Was the original one also voted on?
Well, we need to, now we, the older one, that one's still on.
We need to vote on the budget and the amendments.
We have the one...
As amended.
In the minutes, I know your computer crashed, is it, we probably should make sure the one amendment got denied also, voted down.
Yes, I have that.
Okay. Okay.
So, then the resolution would have to, the total would be three million, two hundred sixteen thousand, three hundred thirty-six dollars.
Okay. And Jennifer's asked for roll call vote on the resolution for the 2016 budget, including the amendments that we had just discussed here?
Kyle Broom?
Aye.
Jack Hendrick?
Aye.
Alex Justisher?
Aye.
Jennifer Pickle?
Aye.
Harvey Potter?
Aye.
John Williams?
Thank you.
Jack, this is a point of reference, we have a village icon with us tonight. Sitting out here is Joanne Kessler, who was the village clerk when I actually started, and who regularly kind of boxed my ears and said, "That's not the way we do things, young man." And so...
Are you still available?
Thirty-two years later, I always liked it when Joanne comes to some of these hearings just to see if I improved at all. So, but we're very fortunate, and Joanne worked, if you think this carpet is bad, Joanne worked in the basement of Flynn Hall, and on nights that the cloggers were there, the meetings were short, because you just kind of, you had to kind of wait to see if they would, they would get done in time. So, anyway, this is Joanne Kessler.
All right. Let's take care of item number nine. Item number ten, discuss and consider the minutes of, A, the regularly scheduled meeting of the village board of November 2nd, 2015.
Motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Motion by Jennifer, second by Harvey, to approve the minutes of the November 22nd meeting as presented. Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Ten B, budget workshop of November 10th, 2015 minutes.
Motion to approve.
Okay?
Second.
Okay.
Motion in second, any discussion, Alex, or...
Um, item five, item six, says there was votes at five to zero, and then we closed the meeting with a six to zero.
Because Jack...
That's because I was...
That's because you keep... Perfect, keeping me on track.
It was a daylight savings time.
Okay, good, no questions.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor of those minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
One.
One abstent, oh, that's right, you weren't here yet. Thank you, one abstention. Okay, item eleven, presentations to the board, anything other than what we have, okay? Item twelve, unfinished business, doesn't look like we did. Must be all done? Okay. Item thirteen, new business, thirteen A, discuss and consider approval of extension of lease with Clark Corp in the municipal services building.
In your packet should have been a, or was, a memo that I put together that outlined the request by Clark Corp to extend their current lease. The current, when, when the village purchased the municipal services building, the Clark Corp tenant carried over, the village assumed, had the, had that assigned and assumed that lease, and their lease at the present time would end in February. And they are now asking for their lease to be extended from February 1st, 2016 to December 31st, 2016, so that we get back on, so we actually get on a calendar basis. And they would also like to have the option of further extending the lease for an additional year commencing on January 1st, 2017, and extending until December 31st, 2017. I'll, as I understand it, this particular space is not needed at this time, if, there are future plans for it, and I'd be happy to answer any questions or have staff answer any questions. The space would likely be planned for future Parks and Rec or Public Works office space. However, that's not on the horizon or determined that way, so certainly, one or two years would be no issue as far as staff is concerned.
Are we foreseeing it extending out past?
No, in fact, I contacted our bond council, because the building was purchased with tax-exempt bonds. There's a, there's a certain threshold on how much of that building could be occupied by a private entity, and through 2017 would be that cap, so...
Okay, because at some point, we're gonna need the space, but it's nice to have the additional revenue.
Right.
And there's two properties there, one's empty and one's...
One's completely unfinished and empty, and theirs is finished and being utilized.
And we're not looking to raise the, how long have they been in there?
Um, I can answer that for you.
I guess we bought it, they were there.
But, I mean, that would be up, you were asking about raising the rent?
I don't know if that's, I leave that to the...
They, yeah, because they first moved in in February 2014.
Okay. So, when, after we took occupancy, after we took custody of the building?
Before.
Just before.
It was in summer. Oh, we just took in, at the end of the, at the end of the year.
Right.
Guess I'm fine with the two-year thing, I don't really want to go beyond that.
Well, it sounds like we can't.
Yeah.
We can't go beyond that.
Because at some point...
Does the lease, are they asking for a two-year?
They're asking for a one-year extension with one option for another year.
With the option.
And they're not even using all of those square feet that you said?
They're using five thousand square feet.
They're using all of it.
But there's another five thousand next door to them that's unfinished, not being used.
Outside of dates, did anything else change in the lease?
No. Dean, no.
Motion to approve first amendment to the office warehouse municipal services building lease agreement.
Second, sorry, I thought you were done.
All right. We have a motion by Harvey and second by Jennifer to approve the extension of the lease with Clark Corp. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Okay, item thirteen B, discuss and consider process for selection of new village president.
At some point in my future, I think Wisconsin Stat 17.24 will be on my tombstone, and I've gotten to know it pretty well. In the last five or six years, we've had three different instances where this has come up. This is somewhat of a unique situation, and what I tried to do was to simply set forth the options that you have. There are essentially three. You can fill, you can select an individual to fill the vacant position for the remainder of the term. That means the board can, the board can decide to choose the individual, they can decide how they want that choice to be made, they can set up a process, that's perfectly all right. Board can also select an individual to fill the vacant position until a special election is held, and the special election is somewhat of a misnomer, because if you read the language of the statute, the special election would be the April election. And the current board, or the current board can decide to leave the position vacant until a special election is held, and again, that would be in April, 2016. If the board decides to go the election route, then you should keep in mind that there are some deadlines in terms of, let's see, January 5th, 2016, at 5:00 PM would be the deadline for circulating nomination papers, getting signatures, and having them filed with the village clerk.
So, then that's the same as the, as the three other positions that are up...
Right.
Next year as well, so the timing's all at the same time.
What was that date again? January 5th? January 5th.
And that includes all the signatures and them.
Let me just, in the, in the past, the board has, I can remember, well, actually, Joanne was a clerk. The first time that it happened, the village president announced that his work commitments made it necessary for him to leave the position. The board simply nominated someone and someone on the board, and it happened all in one evening. That, that has been the exception. Normally, the board takes some time not only to choose which route they're gonna go, but also then how the process is set up, just like we did with filling the position, John's position. So, happy to try to answer any questions I can.
Well, can I state my opinion?
Sure.
I really don't think we should go the election route for a couple of reasons. It's so, the timeline is so quick.
You mean for the special election in this area?
The special election, yeah.
So, you're in favor if we appoint somebody for the remainder of the term then, or...
So, option one, you mean?
I think I'm in favor of option one. That's, that's kind of where I, my gut is pointing me. I mean, we want to get somebody in here that's vested, but we don't want to rush it, rush, 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 rush.
Yeah, the deadline for nomination papers is a bit of a...
It's kind of a bugger, especially with the holiday in there.
Yeah.
It's not really any different than for anybody that's up for election.
There's a period where it starts.
But chances are, you've been thinking about that for a while. I mean, the village, that's a big job.
It would also be a one-year term, I think.
Well, no, the term isn't up until next April.
It's, right, so it's a one-year term, it's able to...
They would be elected for one year.
Oh, I got you.
And just as, just for, just so you know, and I think, I think you finally have the answer to this question. In the statutes, it talks about the fact that the village president gets elected in even years, once Dane County hits 500,000, which it has. However, it appears that that does not kick in until the next census. So, I'm trying to get that verified, calling the GAB at this particular point in time is a little... Apparently, they're, apparently, they're doing other things. And I haven't gotten a specific answer, I just point that out, that sometime in the future, we're going to be dealing with that, but we don't have to deal with it now, so...
The, you know, from, from where I sit, and I was, I was very, I was very vocal. The, you know, from, from where I sit, and, and I was, I was very, I was very vocal in, at the la, the last time a similar situation arose, I was very vocal that I felt like it was the citizens' choice, and that an election was the best route, and, and I still feel that way. I, I feel like it is, that we need to trust the electorate of the citizens of Cottage Grove to be able to decide who they want in that role. And, and I mean, and, and this is, like I said, this is based on the history that I have and, and the positions that I've taken in the past.
So Harvey, you're, are you saying option two or option three then?
Uh...
Is there both? One without appointing someone and then just waiting for the election, or the other one? Just to clarify. Because they both, they cover both of your scenarios.
Right, we've given a third option of leaving it vacant.
Yes.
Yeah.
And there's village business to take care of, so...
Well, I, we, we'd have, we'd have to have somebody to sign documents until the election in April, but...
Which is the next item.
We're gonna deal with that.
Yeah, that's the next item. But I, whichever one is the special election, so-called special election, because I don't really see it as a special other than it's, other than it's out of sequence as far as the year goes.
Two, two and three are both special elections?
Yes.
The, the question becomes, do we fill that position until the special election, or do we leave it vacant until the special election?
Um, I guess option two.
So fill that within the board until the special election in April.
Yeah. That would be, that would be my preference.
To make it more, may I?
I'm done, for now.
To make it more interesting, option two, if you, if you go with option two, nominate, promote somebody basically, to fill the seat, and that person is not up for election, and they don't run for the job, their, the idea is to fill in and be that signature, does that person default back to their trustee, or did they lose their seat?
No, if they become president, they lose their seat.
They lose their seat. So you would have to, the scenario, okay, I'm off-cycle, okay? So you're off-cycle, I think, casual cycle. So we put in for it, either one of us, we put in for it, we lose our, our seat, the board has deemed us fit to be the signature and handle building agendas and working with Matt. Then all of a sudden, April comes along with the special election, the village chooses who they choose to be as the president, that person applies for the job to the village and doesn't make it, or doesn't apply for the job, so if some new person is elected, does that person, would Kyle, would I, would Jennifer back to our original trustee position?
Well, yeah, we would still have to, we would have to approve, or we would have to appoint or have a special election to fill the seat that's being vacated by one of us.
But that's, the question is, yeah, do you, does the vacancy go back?
Yeah, I assume you're saying that.
Does the vacancy go back? Because that, that's where appointing becomes complicated. I think it's important to have a, an elected official in that role. I know we have an option coming up, the, the agenda has been massaged a little bit, we had an option of, of using staff as well, but I think the role is an elected official, someone that...
Well, at least my initial understanding is that if you are appointed village president, you're, you're giving up, I mean, I don't, you can't be village president and trustee at the same time. So...
But what he's saying is...
It's a temporary term.
If he, if he, his term isn't up until 2017.
Trustee term.
So if he is appointed as village president in the temporary, and somebody else comes in, runs for elec, runs for the election, gets voted as the president, is then the president, Alex would then revert back to his trustee position.
No, because somebody, when, somebody has been appointed to, to fill his seat.
Not necessarily.
We still have a six-person board, you're just appointing one person to act in the temporary president position.
The statute says that we have...
So you're not appointing somebody and replacing...
I would think that you should, you should get your seat back.
That would be...
Well, that's a question, but yeah, that's...
The statute says that all the chairs have to be...
If we now, if we select an acting president from one of us, then whoever that person is, if their term is not expired as trustee, I would, I would say that they should be able to go back to being a trustee. I mean, that...
Right, but we can't set that process.
No, I, I don't know if there's some legal...
Well, hey, well, let me put it this way. I don't know for sure, it sounds like that's the case if your term continues, but I'd have to help, help verify that.
The resolution to make it work, I think in the end...
I thought I had thought of every question, but obviously I haven't.
You don't have to, you don't have to fill out the entire year with a completely full board.
No.
That we know for sure.
Right.
So even if one of the current board members was appointed in the temporary position, temporary president position, we would not have to appoint somebody to fulfill that empty trustee then seat.
Right.
So that trustee would revert back to their trustee position as of the election.
Yeah, I guess, and I think it's how we designate that person in terms of, do we designate them as the president, or are we simply designate them as a person who's gonna sign on behalf of the...
And interim, right.
Yeah, right, which is, which is the next item on the agenda, so.
I, I hear what y'all are saying about, this is a, you know, it's a highly visible, I mean, the head of our, or she, is the head of our community. I just have a little anxiety over rushing somebody into choosing whether they're gonna run for president. I mean, it's a big job, it's a big decision, here, go ahead, while we got Christmas and New Years and everything, go ahead and decide if you're gonna run for president. And, and, you know, how, how soon will the masses know that this is what we're doing? Chances are, they'll read it in the paper, which will come out Thursday.
But remember, they've known that there's been a vacancy since middle of November. The other thing is, Deb, I, I have a question for you. I know, for instance, that if an incumbent fails to file non...
Candidacy?
Non-candidacy papers before the date, then there's an extended period of time. Would there be, in this circumstance, the potential for a few extra days to gather those nomination signatures for village president?
My initial reaction would be no.
Because it's right in time with...
Okay.
And keep in mind, just, just to, on the first page of the, of the memo, I put that on there for a reason, just, I think sometimes there's a misunderstanding of the role of president, and that is, I mean, the, the president is a member of the board, they just have some administrative, I don't mean to be in the position, I just, it just, this is what the statutes say. And I think that there's always an education period where you say, but you're not a mayor, you know, you, you vote, you're a member of the board.
Not the king.
Well, yeah, yeah, it's good to be the king. But as I said here, the president signs all ordinances, rules, bylaws, regulations, commissions, licenses, and permits adopted by the board. The president shall maintain peace and good order, and can deputize any of you in case of a disturbance or riot. I haven't seen that in, in my time, but who knows? So I mean, it's, there's a, there's an administrative aspect to the president's position, and I just wanna make sure people understand that, that that's, that's how it's set up. It's different than a, than a city with a mayor.
There's also a lot more meetings that the president has to attend, I mean, there, there are more responsive, responsibilities, claims on your time, if you will.
Yeah.
It's not something to be taken lightly.
Don't.
And I think if we, if we run the process like we did for, I wanna say hiring John, but appointing John, we're giving those same people, the people that might consider running, we're giving them the same opportunity, but maybe a little more time to think about it and for us to think about it as well. I mean, we were elected by the people, I, I would suspect that they would trust us to, to make a good decision. We, we did with John.
How many more years is the, the term?
If you got elected in, in April, then you'd have a year.
So your term is on cycle with the president?
Right.
But we, at some point, according to statute, 2020 in the census, we gotta be on an even year.
Right, and...
So could, could we do that in 2016?
Well, that's one of the things that I wanted the GAB to talk about, because Deb and I, well, Deb and I were talking about this, and she said, well, I've never heard of that, and I said, well, you know, either did I, but it's in the statute. So, you know, years ago, no one ever envisioned that there'd be a county other than Milwaukee that was more than 500,000.
Right.
Sure, I mean, when these, when the statutes were written. And there are, there are references to, this 500,000 figure is, is, triggers a number of things. For example, some of our agreements involving county attorney, and, and it triggers it here. So I'm just trying to get a, I, I, I think that there are some other municipalities that will be affected by this, and so we're trying to get, you know, some kind of definitive statement on it.
To John, to John's point, I'm not so sure about what Dane County crossed that 500,000 population in the 2010 census.
No.
I don't think so.
How many signatures is required for president?
Same as 2020.
Yeah, I mean, it's...
It's dependent on the populace.
Yeah. I mean, getting 20 signatures is not the problem, it's all of a sudden, do I wanna do this?
No, it's putting the thought, do I really wanna do this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
According to our ordinance, the president's elected on the odd numbered years. So I don't know if that covers it or not. That's our ordinance.
Yes, which is where we are.
That's what we did with the GAB.
That's where we are.
So this person would be elected for one year?
One year.
Unless we change the ordinance.
And that's an awful lot to ask somebody to go through, too.
We can't run six for another, for a year and a bit, a year and four months.
2010 census, 488,000.
Well, you legally can.
Thank you. 073.
Well, whether you want to. What, what did you pay?
I thanked Matt.
The 2010 census was 488,000, 073.
That's close.
We're probably there now. So do we wanna, I mean, do we wanna think about this for a while? I mean, I, I'm sure you are the same as me, that it's the first question everybody asks, what are you guys gonna do? What are you guys gonna do?
Yeah.
It's not something that we should rush into if we're not, but we, we need to make a decision.
Well, you're right, if we think on it longer, it's gonna give no time to...
You, you, if you don't make a decision, it's not...
You know, as it is right now, that's less than a month.
Yeah.
To get your, well, you can get your section, you know, 20 minutes, but that's not hard.
What, what happens if we have a special election and nobody puts in for it? Because of the short time frame?
Right.
Well, I know what happened up in Columbia County.
Oh, good grief.
And they cut cards, I don't know, it was somebody from...
Dart game or something?
Yeah, yeah.
Put coins, whatever.
I mean, there's, there's a variety of ways, I, I think we've cut cards here...
That's for a tie, he's asking, nobody gives their names.
I know, well, but this was...
Well, I mean, since it was such a short timeframe and nobody puts in to, to go for a president role, what would happen at that point? Would we be back to possibly...
Then, then we'd be back to saying, yeah, we'd be back to where the board would have to appoint.
So I guess, kinda thinking that avenue, thinking if they're passionate about putting in in the next, you know, month or so, they did their due diligence to make sure they, they did it, and if not, then we'd be back here and we'd be...
In January.
Are you okay with having an uncontested, like, razor president?
I'd like to see, obviously...
Well, of course.
You can have that anyway, even on the one cycle.
You could have that.
You can never control that.
But that's, I feel like that's a little different scenario than, I feel like, push, 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 push.
It's just tough to, to make the decision for public, I mean, we put in for a trustee position, that's all we got. You could've put in for a president, we didn't, you know? So this could let the public decide, and, and I know it's a short timeframe, but that's the cards we've been dealt, you know?
Yeah.
It's, it's an unfortunate position, but I, I think that if they're passionate about running for that, they could, there's enough time if we, we state that now, and there's been three weeks to a month to process that this is possibly coming, and...
Special elections by their nature have a short timeframe.
It's not really a special election, it's a regular election.
Yeah, but, I mean, if you're concerned about the short timeframe, it, it's, that's...
But April isn't what my concern, it's December 7th, and they need to have their papers in in 28 days, 29 days.
But, I mean, my point is, Jennifer, is that this is, this is not necessarily a special election in the true sense of a special election, but they, they are limited time-wise in the number of days that they have to get those nomination papers in for any, any type of special election. It's, it's not, it, and decide whether or not they're gonna run. What?
I don't see where you're going with that.
Well, I'm just trying to counter the fact that trying to decide whether or not you're gonna run for village president in April, it would be comparable to saying if, you know, a special election for county sheriff, you're given X number of days to decide, or to get your papers together to do that. So a timeframe is limited regardless of what type of, which type of office you're running for, or you have to decide in a relatively short timeframe.
Well, and kind of another thing to kind of go off of what Harvey was stating is that if 50% of the board up here was planning on running in for April, they're already kinda going through that process of getting prepped for a run, so it really is the, us three basically that terms aren't up, and knowing the question on if we can continue our trustee spot after being temp president, and that's, so...
Whenever...
Well, I wasn't really thinking about spokes, I was thinking about other, other people.
Right, but, right, I don't, I know what you're saying.
You can still campaign as a, as a write-in, which is very cumbersome, that is a whole, yeah, or, you know, just philosophically, I'm, I'm a little frustrated with the whole thing because Lee is a tremendous resource for the historical knowledge of Cottage Grove, but we really don't have formal guidance documents other than your memos, and it, coming out of this, the statutes, the statutes say we have to fill it, how we do it, how we've done it, or relying on that.
But, but...
So there, there isn't, there isn't any? There isn't. Doesn't, right.
I mean...
No one sat down to create anything, I guess, I don't know if it's possible to create them or not, and it's, it's...
I mean, I, I suppose the board could come up, in fact, I think at some point, there was some discussion of, oh, should we come up with a way, it's about, it's gonna never happen again, but, but, you know, it's, it's true that if you look at this as a business, this isn't much of a business plan or a succession plan.
No.
But it's, it is, it is what we have, and it's just, you know, it's really as simple as that, here are your, here are your options.
And it is a different answer.
We have precedent, we have precedent. I mean, when Scott Norton left, they appointed Mike Michelson. There's your precedent.
And we had a, and we had a process, people, I think, submitted documents.
Just like we did for John, correct?
So in order to give citizens enough time, are we gonna make a decision on what option we wanna propose?
Whether we're gonna do it in 2016 or 2017.
Yeah, fill it for the, the rest of the term.
Do we, do we need, I'm sorry, do we need the answer to that question?
Well, soon.
Seat retention?
Soon, I mean, the sooner, I guess picking up on the, the question of giving people enough time, I, I think the board wants to, as soon as it can, make a decision of either A, we're gonna pick the new president, or B, we're gonna put it to an election.
Yeah.
The, the other, the other option of filling the, the spot really can, we'll take care of that with the next item on the agenda. That's not really the issue. I think the real issue before you is, should we have an election, or should we appoint ourselves?
I guess I just really have a hard time making decisions for the public when there's an opportunity for the public to make that decision, and...
I, I think, I think there's a sign of disrespect to the public to...
You're gonna call me disrespectful?
Well, maybe that's not the right word.
I'm trying my best.
But, I mean, I think it's, I think it's, sure, it's a... But, I mean, I think it's, I think it's, sure, it's a challenge to get, to decide in, in the next few weeks and get the signatures and all of that, but I think, I think the trust that has been placed in us deserves to be placed in the public as well. And, and I think that it's, it's a, the timing is, is really fairly decent to, to proceed with the election. And like I said, I, I took that position when, when Norton resigned, and so I think that that's where I, you know, it just seems to me that anytime the citizens can, can participate in, in the decision-making, then the citizen should be allowed to participate in the decision-making.
Lee, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Are you able to take option three and just make the clause that the position's vacant, however, one of the trustees have the, are elected for the.
Well, what, what I would do, Kyle, is simply have us take action on the next item as, as a person that's gonna sign, and I think that's really all you, that's all you really need to do unless, unless you specifically want to, to fill it, but as long as we have someone that signs, I, I think we're fine.
I got a lot of emails about Colonial. I got, I think, two comments total about the position. The two comments I got was to nominate and then run an election. They're basically anonymous at this point.
Election.
To nominate a, an interim and then have an election. They, they take it for what it's worth, it's a grain of salt, it's called anonymous.
It just gets tricky with kinda going back to what you said, not knowing that answer and not being able to come up with that answer.
Right.
Yeah.
So that's where you're really adding into kind of.
Yeah, I mean, I.
I kinda feel like I'm in between a rock and a hard place.
Yeah.
Because if we are going to hold election, hold an election for, for the seat, we really need to let people know right now, otherwise it's not really fair.
Is it possible to do the special election, not in April, but in?
Well.
No, then you've got six months left, or you have a six-month term.
Actually, we, we looked at that, but the way that they've written 17.24, and I don't, and I don't disagree with Alex's comment, which, you know, setting aside that I can give you some historical background, I, I'm limited on what I can give you from a legal point of view because this is, this is what I have, and it does make it clear that the special election is held in April.
Yeah.
The, the following April, so. Again, I, I really think that from a practical point of view, your decision kinda comes down to, do we, are we going to, as a board, appoint, as has happened in the past, or are we going to have a special election? Or have an election?
So just procedure, how do we do this potentially? Is there a roll call and each go around the room, we pick?
I would just say, someone should make a motion.
Then I'll make a motion that we have an election for filling the president's role in April by the statutes of the options that we're given, and that way, I think for folks here, then the voices are heard.
I'll second that.
And that gives us another few weeks' extra time for candidates.
Devon probably will be vested in a roll call.
Sure. Is there any other discussion?
I'm just wondering if we table that motion right now and go to the next line item so we know we have.
Coverage.
Coverage.
Can't table a motion.
Yeah.
We have to have them withdrawn.
Or amend it or withdraw, because.
Table.
They're supposed to, right, there's a chicken issue here.
Well, I, I would. That's kinda my only thing is, you don't want, I don't wanna vote on something and then go to the next line item and.
Yeah, so let it die, or you wanna withdraw?
Or can I add to it, assuming that we have someone that can sign for the votes?
Well, let's do this, since we do practice Roberts rules late, I just take his motion and we'll put it under my hat, and then we'll move to item two.
I'm really uncomfortable with that, Lee.
Why?
I'm kidding.
There's, there's obviously nothing under my hat.
There's nothing under there.
But again, I mean, I, well, let's, let's just look at that and let's, let's answer that question.
Okay.
So your, the next item, the way that it's been written, is that the village president signs all of these documents, and since we have a vacancy, then what we're doing is designating someone to execute that documentation. It's really, there are, there are some legal documents that have to be signed, that's really about, that's about all we're doing with this. Essentially only signing things that the board has already approved. Right.
They, they do not have to be president to, to sign them, so.
Not per this.
Unless it says specifically that the president needs to sign, correct?
Is there any document that requires presidential signature?
Generally says chief elected official.
Or designated.
Yeah. Right.
So I guess using that, going to everything that we discussed, my thought would be to leave the president position vacant with having an elected village trustee make the signatures for the time being until the April election.
Yep.
And then it'll take over from there.
Then we wouldn't have to worry about the whole seat losing thing.
Right.
Right.
Exactly. So that's where I was.
That's kinda why we had the second option on here, so.
Yes, and that's why I wanted to talk about it and then clarify what we've discussed in the past and then go to it, so.
Good.
And, and I will tell you that just by, by virtue of your, of the errors and omissions coverage that we have, you're not gonna take on any liability by signing, so.
So are we supposed to nominate somebody to do that?
But I, just to get additional clarification, is this, since the president position would be vacant, the committees and this stuff would also be kind of?
For the time being.
Yes, okay.
Right?
Yep.
We can, I think the trustees, we can nominate to backfill some of the slots.
Well, I'd be.
To make sure they should be coming to those meetings. Elected coverage.
I'd be, I'd recommend against that because I think you're taking away one of the few powers that the president has, which is to, to make appointments.
No, no, this is, this is filling. This is a backfill the president's slot in the committees to make sure that there's elected officials representing it.
Attending those meetings?
Yes.
It's like a sub.
It's like a sub. I can make it up a way.
I think we already have an alternate.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, if we have an alternate.
It's basically an alternate.
Alternates, yep.
Again, I just don't wanna take away, what?
Don't we have to change that in all the ordinances then to allow for alternates for all these committees and then actually appoint those alternates?
Well, there is an ordinance that, that does speak to alternates, and why don't we put that together for next time for everybody? And, I mean, there, there has been action taken where the board can appoint alternates, and maybe that's the way to do it.
And as a board.
I'm sorry, no, you went first, go ahead.
As a board member, we can attend any committee underneath us, and any committee that you're in, if there's a committee underneath them, you could attend those meetings. Even if they go into closed sessions, we could still attend as members of the parent committee. So even if you, if you attended as an alternate, or even just as a, as a, as a chair, a trustee, maybe you're not a voting member, but at least there's representation, and so that there, there can be proper reports at the board.
Well, we've.
So that would be.
We've actually, I think we've dealt with that, and I think we do have in our ordinances where we can appoint alternates and they are considered voting members, so.
Okay.
We'll bring that report back in.
And who will be running this meeting? Jeff? Will you, can elect somebody every time?
Yeah.
It would be a lot.
You can.
I guess going off of that, if we decide to go this avenue tonight, moving forward with this direction, that doesn't mean that we can't put in a trustee into that position role at a later date.
Right.
If nobody puts in for the position, we would have to fill the.
Right.
By statute, we have to fill the position.
So basically, we can make the decision to leave it vacant with a signature of a trustee for this meeting, get the information that goes over with, do you lose your seat or whatever, and then you could always revisit that at a later meeting.
It's, it's not a case of use it or lose it.
Correct. Okay, so then, I'm gonna make a motion.
I don't want to make the motion.
Oh, go ahead. Go ahead.
You're not gonna like it. I make the motion to nominate myself to sign these documents because I am the only girl.
Well, first off, we have to make the motion of the process first, right? And then.
Really?
Make the motion of who.
To, to pass the resolution and I wanna sign it.
That's your motion?
That is, that's your motion?
Yeah.
Okay, is there a second?
The resolution being what we just discussed and to.
The resolution is just the signing.
So, it's in a village official to sign, so wouldn't it be village trustee, not official?
I thought that, that was subject to however the board wanted it to be.
That's how I.
Yeah, but there's, okay. Yeah, I just wanna make sure it stayed on the board level, I guess, so.
Okay.
I'll second.
Here we have a motion, and a second then to have Jennifer sign village documents, and that is for the duration of till.
Right.
April.
Till the election.
Till a new president.
Sworn in.
Sworn in.
The resolution says, right, exactly.
Okay.
Till the president's sworn in.
Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Get a pen, Jennifer.
Now we can go back to C.
Now we're back up to 13B.
Okay.
Our B, yes.
Now we're quick and quiet.
And, and the motion comes out from underneath the hat.
Yes. There it is.
Which was run an election.
All right, I'll second John's motion.
Do you have a special election in April 16?
You did?
Yeah.
The board chooses pursuant to section 17.24 to hold a special election in April and not to fill the, at.
At this time.
At this time. Why don't we just say the board chooses to have an election in April, president and president?
Yep.
And if we decided between now and then to fill it, we could, or temporarily, or?
We have that related, yep.
Okay.
Wait a minute, say that again?
Like, next month, if somebody wanted a president for the next two term, months till the election, just for the title, I don't know.
If no one puts in for it, I think that's, that's the problem.
That's kind of the next step.
If no one puts in for it, then we have to re.
Yep.
We have, we're gonna have to fill the role because a special election is not.
So this is still a moving target.
I guess the doubt, if it's, if no one puts in for it, really, if no one puts in for it, do we still have a line item on the ballot for write-in?
Probably.
Well, if you're holding an election.
Yeah, you have to.
Right.
Right now, we're saying it will be on the ballot, whether there's.
Whether there's candidates or not.
So.
We could have Mickey Mouse.
Mickey Mouse.
Village of Cottage Grove.
Who is, by the way, the highest voter in the United States.
Yes, but we can't count those anymore as of two years ago. However, you could have a group of people that happened in Portage, Rhode Island, somewhere, that were in the bar the night before and somebody said, "Hey, you're gonna run," and three people put their name on the ballot and they won.
Right.
And they accepted.
Yes.
So it can happen.
Yes, it can.
Fantastic.
Okay, so the motion is for the board, for the village to hold an, an election in April to, for the purpose of filling the vacated president's spot.
And is that gonna be for then a two-year term?
One.
No, one-year term.
So we're gonna stay with the odd numbered years?
Yes.
Okay. Told otherwise.
So there you have a motion, and I think somebody.
Can I just say one thing?
Yep.
I think it's an awful lot to ask somebody to run for a one-year term for president. That's a, that's a big, tall order.
Did somebody second?
I had before.
Okay, so you have a motion and a second then to have a special election for village president in April of 2016. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? Five.
Did you, I'm sorry, wait, should we have done it as a roll call?
Well, I'm the, I'm the only one that said no, so.
It was just, I'm sorry. That's all right.
I know we did the other one as a roll call. All right, so now we are on to 13B. Discuss and consider resolution 201509, a resolution to authorize matching funds for a Dane County build grant.
Some information on your package, copy of the proposed resolution along with a letter from Dane County's Planning Department. I recall back in August, you directed staff to apply for this grant, and we found out in October that it was awarded $15,000. One of the conditions is that we have to approve a resolution authorizing our $5,000 match. You might notice in the letter, there was a November deadline, this was on our agenda for the mid-November meeting, which we didn't have, and explaining the situation to the county planning department, they were.
So they're still.
Very understanding and.
Okay.
And the matching funds are accounted for in the budget. Okay, I make a motion then to approve 5,000 matching funds.
Did you say, is in the budget?
Yeah. He said it was in, so I'm good.
So motion from John and second by Kyle then to authorize matching funds for Dane County build grant? Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Moving right along. Discuss and consider approval of resolution 201513, a resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of up to $730,296 water system revenue bond series 2015 and providing for other details and covenants with respect to their two.
Lee?
Wes? We're on.
Spotlight's in you.
We're on item 13E. I believe he's gonna ask you to table.
Yeah, with the water system bonds.
We're gonna table.
Line table?
I, I thought that was, what did you told me?
On the bonds.
Yeah.
Could we just take a short recess?
Sure.
Okay.
Yes, do we need a question?
Any.
Five-minute recess?
Yeah.
Sure.
Two and a half. Five minutes. Five-minute recess. Five-minute recess. Item thirteen E.
Uh, my recollection has been refreshed.
Don't put that.
That indeed I did ask to have this matter tabled.
Motion's table.
Thank you.
Second.
Uh, motion and second then to table item thirteen E. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Mister President, um, or Mister President pro tem. Uh, there is, um, on, on the agenda, uh, a recommendation from, involving peer court.
Yep.
And, um, I, and we have people here, um, however, what I would ask the board is if this matter could be tabled. It allows me to, um, do some additional research so we can give you the full, um, parameters of the, of the issue, um, for the next meeting.
Motion's table.
Item fourteen I.
I mean, everybody has seen the items, so you know what we're tabling and, okay.
Yeah.
All right, uh, motion and a second then to table the peer court item, um, until the next meeting or whatever.
Who's second, yeah?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you did, you did, okay, I'll second.
I might, I think John did.
John did?
No, I did not. Oh, yes, I did, I'm sorry.
You did? Okay, we're good.
Somebody did.
Motion by Harvey, second by John, to table item fourteen, the peer court. Yeah.
Fourteen I.
Fourteen I. And with next meeting.
Actually, it's D one, D, D one.
Sorry, flipped into my pages here too quick. Okay. Um, yeah, discussion.
Is there another peer court between now and our.
No, we, we meet alternate months, so we won't meet again till January, so actually, I would like that table, we need to go until, uh, possibly the first meeting in February, because we meet the, uh, I don't have the January. We would meet January nineteenth, that's the one.
Well, why don't we just table at this point to a, to a date to be determined, and then we'll see when, when we can, um, get together.
Okay.
All right, um, just, I just don't want to lose track of it because it came from Law Enforcement Committee and.
Right.
The data we have is, we needed to talk about it, but.
Right.
Yeah, and I don't know that there's, you're right, I mean, that's, the.
Seems important enough to bring it up.
Yeah, and you could always ask for it on the next meeting and see if, yeah, we're ready to go.
Well, we'll, we'll bring it back as quickly as possible, but this at least gives me the opportunity to, um, uh, look at some of the legal questions that were, that were raised in here, so.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second then to table this agenda item. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? Motion passes. Okay, we are on to thirteen, I have to say. Discuss and consider resolution twenty fifteen dash twelve, a resolution appointing the village of Cottage Grove election inspectors.
This is just basic paperwork that we're required to do through the GAV to list the, um, election inspectors that the village has on file, and every two years, the, um, two parties, two, um, most prominent parties have the right to send lists in of people who are interested to represent their party as election inspector also, so they are included in the list. And then this has to be filed with GAV, so it's just kind of biannual paperwork that has to be.
Motion.
Yeah, motion? I'll second it. Motion then, a second then to approve the election inspector issue, any other discussion on that one?
Is there, is there any updates between last, or two years ago and this year?
Um, we've gotten a couple of new names, um, that we got in the April election, that I didn't put on the list because they haven't gone through formal training. But they will be included, to be asked this year as we go on, because.
I'm wondering if my name should be taken off, because I haven't had that, the new training that's required.
Um, we haven't held it, so when we hold it, I'll.
There you go.
Okay, okay.
Okay. So, um, motion and a second then to appoint the election inspectors, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Item G, we have three, um, applicants for operator licenses, are, Chief, any issues with any of these three?
No.
On the agenda, I mean, the reason I ask is if we're comfortable taking them all three together, just to get things moving on. Okay, I'll make the motion then to approve Kevin Loma Blackbear, Bradley Holman Stoppendo, and Lucas Pierce of Dollar General for operator licenses.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second then to approve the three individuals I just read. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Aye.
One abstention. Okay, finally, here we go, on to reports to, from village boards, commissions, and committees, community development authority.
Uh, we met, um, on the second Monday of November, uh, we discussed, uh, participating in a, in a ad brochure, uh, and, uh, Aaron, I'm gonna let you talk about it, because you were very good at describing it for members of the CDA.
Sure. Madrep, which is the Madison area, uh, General Economic Partnership, um, the seven, for the seven county region around Madison, does an annual, uh, economic guide that they hand out at, uh, conventions and send to interested businesses, things like that. Um, they sell ad space in it to a lot of municipalities, um, neighboring to us, do participate in that, uh, every year. And, uh, we had some money from the cable fund that we were allocating towards purchasing an ad, and at the meeting, we looked at some different designs for that.
And, and that was, that was the major item of discussion at that meeting.
Okay. Um, board, B, Dear Grove EMS Commission, um, if, if you recall the timing of this commission, I did not go to that meeting, that was right after, uh, right around that time, and so we don't have a report from that at this point. But I do have the run statistics available, um, and the question has been raised, there seems to be a disproportionate staffing issue at Station Two sometimes. It's not like a continuing trend, but there are a months where you'll see like three out of the last six where the Station Two in Deerfield is staffed more than over here.
Jack, is Station Two Deerfield?
That's Deerfield, yeah.
Since when is that not an issue?
I got together the last reports for the last six months, and if you'd like that, I'd be happy to give you that. Last month was like eighty hours more over there than. So.
You heard no problem?
Yeah, yeah. So that's my report from Dear Grove EMS Commission, emergency government?
There was no meeting on December second as planned, so it'll be early January, the next meeting.
Okay.
Who's sitting on that committee?
I am.
I never would have riddled that out. Uh, no, from the town.
Uh, Mike Play.
And who from the school district?
Uh, the vice principal for GDS.
The new, the new.
Yes.
James Kamoku.
Yes.
There you go.
And then there's a number of citizens on there as well, from both the town and the.
Law enforcement committee, we met last month, and that's where you saw the motion that we just decided to table, um, but the law enforcement committee didn't. At the meeting unanimously support the chief's recommendation to bring this forward, um, and I'm sure you'll see it again. Our next meeting, I think, if everybody has that date open, is December twenty ninth?
Hmm, no.
Or is that?
The fourth Tuesday, the twenty second.
Twenty second, I'm sorry, five Tuesdays in December, all right, December twenty second, five thirty at the police department. And that's it for law enforcement. Next here. Discuss, okay, that's the one that we tabled, net big landfill committee.
Fantastic, five-minute meeting. Um, no issues with any of the wells or anything?
See, that actually, we got over thirty.
Yeah.
That thing's still under control?
It's still there, operating, and, and it was over, we approved the bills, and it was up in there.
Parks Recreation and Forestry Committee, we have a sub item there.
Um, we talked about, um, the state of affairs with our athletic field scheduling, and Reese gave a presentation about, um, how our software has some capabilities to do some online scheduling, so it's not, it's kind of a, I don't want to say free for all, but it, 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 it can be difficult getting the school to comply with, with our rules.
Okay.
So they are working on getting that put together. We talked about not, nonprofit distribution, uh, information distribution in our program guide. We, uh, we're having some discussions about, well, selfishly, I, I have had the gala and I wanted it in the, um, program, but our, our rules don't exactly allow for that, and I thought, um, maybe we should have a conversation, because there are some really great non-for-profit things that happen here in the Grove of the Hot to Trot, the PTO, the Fall Festival, those things, so we're having that conversation, um, on what that's going to look like in the future, without overwhelming staff, because that's not our rule. Um, and then we have our line item. Do you want to talk about that, Sean? So as you know, um, Parks asked for some flooring, in the budget cycle, that didn't happen, and Sean has waved his magic wand.
So we received a, uh, four thousand dollar anonymous donation, um, that we wanted, that we are going to, we would like to use to purchase flooring for the, uh, back area, or the area of the, um, municipal services building that we currently program, uh, with just archery, and what we would like to do is put some, um, sort of adult fitness or fitness flooring in there, so that we can better, better utilize that space and start programming it for when our customers are looking to, um, do these classes and not be as reliant on outside venues to run those classes. So, we received a, a donation for four thousand dollars to do that, in order to purchase enough flooring for that facility, about eighteen hundred square feet, um, we would need an additional fourteen hundred dollars to do that. So it was talked about that there might be a little bit extra in the street maintenance roadway supplies account, so we were asking consideration to move fourteen hundred dollars to our adult enrichment account.
There might be extra?
There is.
Is, is the floor permanent, or is it?
It is not, it is not.
Because the archery, that made me nervous.
Correct, yeah, so we would, we would put it down and, and take it up as needed.
All right, thank you.
Motion to approve the request from Parks.
I'll second.
And there is that extra money in roadway supplies?
Do you want me to, to provide the extra money, is there?
It is.
It is, okay.
It's, it's my understanding that there's.
And JJ can request it as well.
Okay, just wanted to make sure all the receipts have been received.
Thanks, JJ.
Well, then we're good, so, motion and a second to approve that request, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? There you go.
Sean, while you're there, um, what are the, uh, the current agreements between the village and the school district only involve Glacial Drummond? Is that the only one?
As far as maintenance, each, each, as I understand it, each school has its own agreement, and so like, right, we, the current agreement that we have for like mowing is with Glacial Drummond. And that goes until, I believe, twenty twenty-two.
We have a real issue, though, it was brought to my attention, I did not know this, uh, the school will not issue an actual key to Sean and Reese, they will only issue a key card. But that key card only lets the door open once, once it closes, it's locked, and they get real upset if you prop the door open. But are we supposed to hire somebody to sit at that door and open it?
Well.
Ad nauseam?
Where I, where this is kind of going is that I think there are, there are a number of these kinds of issues that may end up happening to be put on paper or dealt with in some fashion, because it's just, there's just a lot of administrative stuff that's been happening.
We, we have a new, we have a new building and maintenance guru, Anu Scully, over at the school district, so I'm, I am kind of hopeful that maybe we can head that way, but it's been, I mean.
Right.
It's been rough.
Is it a, unfortunately, in this day and age, is it a security issue that they're claiming, that they don't want the door?
I think so.
They.
Well, they don't want rats running in, or, you know.
Well, that's why you stop propped open, why is it unlocked, I mean, obviously, your key card.
Our key card gets us in one access.
If they never have that for even their daily staff, that door as a propped open, it might be.
But they can, correct me if I'm wrong, they can go, and make that key card open, or time, time, uh, time the locks, they can, they can do that.
Right.
And so they can, with some instruction from above, they can tell staff to set those locks to be open at the time.
To be open, right.
Reservation, and there's been a, to use the word of the night, a disconnect, I think, um, you know, in that, it, from what I'm told, it's each individual principal's discretion as to how it can happen.
Yeah, that sounds right.
So, this is. This has a, a tendency to be, you know, things are really good, things are really bad, things are really good, things are really bad, and I'm, I'm concerned that we're entering a time when there are some issues, uh, that are gonna have to get addressed, I mean, I'd prefer not to have to put all this in writing, because at times, everybody's gotten along and worked together, but it seems like it's, um, it may be become necessary to do that.
I have a meeting with Dan tomorrow, and I can broach the subject with him.
Yeah, I think you should, because I, I, I think it's, it's just, uh, I mean, as it's being explained, it's just silly that, you know, you can only open the door once, and then what we, do we have to have somebody that just stands there and?
Right, how, I mean, that's just ridiculous.
Sign the key card up.
So just to give you a heads up that that, that might be something that is out there, so.
I have broached the subject with previous superintendents, well, and Scully, and it's, it's been really an uphill battle, just to get the stakeholders together to talk about it.
If, if they're funny regarding the key, can the key card, uh, services like be up, so it's not one and done, maybe it's five, or whatever the number is, that would be reasonable, so you don't run into issues?
I'm not, I'm not understanding your question.
So can I change the key card instead of being one and done into a proper amount, so rather than issue a hard key, can I change the card to be?
They can change it to a timeframe, so they should just have it be for the timing of the, of the event.
So you, you swipe the key and it opens the doors for two hours?
Yeah, whatever it's.
You can do that?
I'm not, I'm not sure if you can do that.
What's nice about the key card is, and, and we have it in our public works building, the key fob, it, it badges with, we knew you opened that door, and I think, yeah, I mean, I could see a security issue why they don't want the door unlocked, I could see that, I totally see your problem, it doesn't make any sense, we rented this, we've, we've been assigned time at this facility, you're not getting any proper access, so the conversation has to be happened. We, we, sign this out, give it to me.
Correct.
You know, and, yeah.
It, yeah, it's.
Fantastic.
It seems like, well, it should be simple.
Yeah, except for it's not.
So.
All right. Peer court steering committee.
Are you?
Can I just quickly back up and expand on just something that Jennifer mentioned about our field, uh, scheduling it? Um, it, it is not just for Monona Grove and what they do, it is for everybody that would be renting facilities for us, so, um, the youth baseball, uh, organizations and things like that, we're just really trying to clean it all up and make sure that we have a better handle on who is using our facilities and when they're using our facilities, so it's not just one specific, you know, group that we're doing this for.
Sorry.
Just want to make sure that's, yeah, no, but it's, that's a part of it, but I just want to make sure that it didn't seem like we were saying that. Okay, peer court.
Okay, peer court, uh, I passed out during the brief break, uh, the report that was, that, uh, Jay Kiefer passed out from, uh, youth services, uh, showing the, uh, various cases through, uh, this time period through November, uh, middle of November it was, um, so we had twenty-nine cases here in Cottage Grove. So we had twenty-nine cases here in Cottage Grove. And we did have a little bit of discussion similar to what was discussed at, at law enforcement. And we just, you know, there's some disagreement, but we have some concerns as well. And we'd like to be able to address those in a, in a more complete fashion.
I think the concern from the law enforcement committee was this kind of defeats the purpose of the state probationary license. Because the record goes away, it's exonerated.
Correct. And that, and, and there was some concern on the committee as well. So we just want to make sure that we're, everybody that is involved is on the same page.
Okay.
Do they have all their, do they have enough eighth graders sitting on that?
Uh, they're always welcome to have volunteers for jury duty.
As you look through this and as you hear the discussion, that gives you some idea, there, there are a number of legal issues that have been raised. And it's a question of who has the authority to do what. And I want to make sure that the board has all of this information in front of you before, uh, before it gets discussed or any action taken. And I will try to have that to you by next meeting because it's not something I want to sit around.
We just kind of thought calendar year would be a good start in point. Okay.
Yeah, I'll do it.
Um, just a couple of quick questions. Under cases referred, it says sixteen male, eleven female. That's twenty-seven. And under, under the, the list, it says twenty-nine, but then the line, the individual line item adds up to twenty-six. So how many cases have we seen?
I will, I would have to check with, with the, in terms of people, an individual could have more than one offense, number one.
Okay. So it would be listed then as under two offenses?
Right.
If the first one is, well, fail slash yield, that's one offense.
Right.
But if it had, okay, so like, just so, just so I'm clear, I don't know what page number it is. For June, there's a possession of marijuana and minor purchase of tobacco. That would be two offenses. And that's where they're counting?
I believe so.
The additional? Okay, that makes sense.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep. Plan Commission? Anything? I don't think we, to be, we have a plan commission?
Plan Commission meets this coming Wednesday.
Yes, but it hadn't been discussed since the last one is why it's put back in there.
The main action item was just reviewing some potential enforcement of the Coyle South developer agreement.
Absolutely.
Well, one of the, there, there are many sad parts of what has happened. But that evening, we actually solved the fence problem. And the developer agreed to put in the fence and it was, and I said to Pat as we were leaving, I said, well, now we can take on the Middle East or some other place in the world. And it just, it just was something that seemed to go on forever. And I will say that I think it was two meetings before that, and at some point he really kind of laid down where, what he thought should happen. And that finally got done. And the Cemetery Association was, was pleased. I think the neighbors were pleased. And, you know, Kyle, I don't know if you want to expand on that at all, but I mean, it just was, it just, it was very difficult, way out of proportion to the, what we were talking about.
Yeah. I think after a lot of meetings, everybody felt that the resolution was acceptable and, and resolved.
That's good. Okay. Public Works and Properties Committee.
Uh, yeah, we had a, we had a meeting. This is back on November third. In your packet, you have basically page one of what JJ is starting as a sidewalk and repair policy. For the sake of time, we pulled a lot of the information. It's a work in progress. But we wanted to have information to the board as they make it questions from residents. Basically, the village has an ordinance that is on the books that basically says, in the case of repair, replacement or repair to existing sidewalks, the cost shall be borne at fifty percent, attributing to the property owner and fifty percent to the village. And this has been on the books for a while. And it is in the budget, has been in the budget for maintaining the village's sidewalks. So what JJ has done in the, in the past second half of the year, fourth quarter, was actually work through part of the village, a section of the village, and started fixing sidewalks.
Yep.
That process includes notification to the homeowner and resident.
Bring the X on the sidewalk.
X is on the sidewalk. And then he puts things out the bid and gets it done appropriately. The, the advantage of the mass bid is obviously you get it cheaper as one shot, as to what the homeowner can provide. So the ordinance is there that we are to do this, included in your packet is a sample bill as to in case a resident asks questions. Also included in the packet is a map that JJ has lined out for the idea of we're going to only tackle these sections at any given time. And so he's looked at the oldest area first, did this issue in twenty fifteen, and then he's going to start working his way around. So you can kind of see where you live on this, on this map and figure out when you're going to have your sidewalk inspection. So you don't have one? You're getting one. It's going to cost you. So, yeah, you don't have one. So the, anyway, it's in your packet for inclusion, just, just so you know, it's coming. We'll, we'll get the formal, the sort of policy that JJ's put together. It's going to be his guidance document at the end. And it's based around the, the ordinance. We also discussed the heavy traffic ordinance. And what we did is with all of the tra, all of, seems to be all the traffic, traffic ordinances we have, it talks about stop signs and all those other things. It basically says, refer yourself to the map, the, what do we call it?
The official map?
The official map. The official traffic map, actually. It's called something as a traffic map. So what we decided to do is really eliminate section E, which is verbiage as to which streets are on, are on that map as, as heavy traffic. So by eliminating that, it gives us one update to the ordinance as opposed to if we add streets or remove streets, we're going to have to update this ordinance every time. So our idea was that we approved that update and that we would move it to ordinance committee to finish the wordsmithing, codifying, whatever needs to be done. We deemed it not a priority. So available for twenty, I'll just hand it to you. Twenty sixteen, whenever the budget avails itself, but in the end, it has, eventually it has to be done. I think the, the ordinance would be budgeted probably through public works since it's their ordinance to maintain. So it may not come out of the general ordinance. So we moved it over to there. We did tour Bonnie Road. It's empty. There was a pile of dirt that he was keeping an eye on, apparently in the middle of the room. But it is empty. And, and in the latest note, you know, it's going to be kept at a minimal state just so the building doesn't degrade under no heat. There is going to be some plumbing that you'll never be able to push all the water out of. So minimal heat, minimal lighting. And basically cold storage for the winter. It's on this agenda. At some point, we're going to have to bring it back to the board. Probably maybe another tour is in order. You're, I'm sure you're more than welcome to tour at any time you want. Contact Matt, contact JJ. And we need to make a decision on what to do with that building as far as the, you know, comprehensive plan or forward thinking plan, what is it that we want to do? But right now, you know, at this point, we're kind of stuck with the salt shed there. And, and that's really the anchor at this point. So until we, you know, obviously we have to get through the season. And then once the season's over, I think we'll be in a good position to set guidance to the public works and properties, what it is going to do. And that's it.
And Utility Committee? Go ahead. Utility Commission?
Well, that was me too. Oh, yeah, I have a folder for that. What did we do? We approved the bill. The main issue, there was a discussion around a particular property that had a, for all intents and purposes, a water leak. It was a water softener that did not shut off. It was in the regeneration mode for quite a long time.
That's like leaving a hose in.
Yeah. And, and their, their bills were quite high for that, that quarter. So we went in and we reviewed it and, and there is guidance through the state statutes. So the water is regulated. There's only so much you can do with that. Sewer is also, you know, a municipal service that has some ordinances and some statutes around it. What we basically determined was it was consumed and it was disposed of through our system. It's not like it ran down the street and didn't hit our sewer system. The water did come out of our tower, which means we manufactured the water. So we were not able to come up with a justification to make an adjustment to their bill, just so that you guys were aware of that as well.
How much?
I, JJ, do you remember how much that was? I have a packet.
You lie.
It was, it was not, it, they don't come to the committee for twenty bucks. I'll tell you that.
Honestly, the quarter bill is sixteen or eighteen hundred. But I mean, it was, it's an eight unit, so they were.
It's an eight-unit apartment building. It was, it was hundreds.
Was it a landlord maintenance issue?
Basically.
Don't want to be judgmental. Call us both again.
Okay. I can't remember where I was going. All right. Anything else on utility?
I'm just looking for the number if I can get to it real quick. Um, no, that was it.
Okay. Reports from village officers, Kyle?
No report.
Awesome. I have no report other than thank you for working through this all tonight. Alex?
No report.
Jennifer?
So we had the gala in November and the preliminary numbers are, we earned over eleven thousand dollars for the school district or for teacher grants and for the music department. So thank you to those of you that, that were there. It was a really a great night. I actually spoke with Lori Naharniak and she said it was one of the best nights of her life. So that really was amazing. The girls' basketball season has kicked off. They play tomorrow night in Milton. They have only lost one game. They're two and one, two and one. Hopefully three and one tomorrow night. So good luck to the boys as well. They're having, I know they won the other night. So should be a good season.
Hurry.
No reply.
John?
Just to note, the public relations meeting will not be tomorrow night. We're moving back up to the sixteenth. Because we didn't have a quorum. And then again, the main thrust of that meeting is to kind of review the, the bits for the new website for the village. And then just to piggyback on what Jennifer said, around the school district, the GDS or the Glacial Drummond School had a craft fair over the weekend. It was very successful. A lot of crafters, very complimentary of the village. Houston's brought out their horses. The fire trucks were rolling and people had a good time. So.
That's a great chamber event.
Yeah.
Yeah.
When is public relations going to possibly?
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hopefully.
Hopefully if we can get a quorum.
All right. Attorney Leader, what's your?
Um, I just want to say thank you to the board for the way that you handled the items, particularly thirteen A and B and C. The, in the past, sometimes the decision of how you're going to fill the spot has sparked considerable discussion and heat. And I really appreciate how you thought through it. So thank you.
Matt? We kind of went past it real, real quick when we tabled thirteen E, the resolution regarding the water system revenue bonds. Just to point out that that's in regards to the refurbishing of the water tower up here, Reservoir Two. So it's a previously approved project. This resolution, when it comes back to the board, will be essentially authorizing closing on that loan. The reason why it needed to be tabled was that there's some, some signature related issues that the bond council is working on with Lee in regards to the vacancy of president. So that's something that they're trying to clear up, should be their next meeting. That's it.
All right. Aaron?
The Chief of Commerce recently launched their Cottage Grove First by Local campaign. They're really pushing to get the word out on that. So if you are not familiar with the details, I'd encourage you to look at their website and find out more about it.
All right. Chief, you got anything?
We're doing the no parking across from Cottage Grove Elementary this week. And I was out there today and only had to shoo away one parent. So we're doing, doing pretty good. And parade went off well Friday. Nobody got run over or crashed into anything. So.
We did receive a letter.
That's your standard for success?
Yes.
We're just taking a letter. We did get the one letter from a village resident about an incident there. And I was just curious how things were.
What was that?
We did have a one letter about some.
Oh, that was about parking at Cottage Grove School?
Yeah.
Yes, I asked for that to be put on the agenda. We're going to wait until after this test to see how things go.
Okay.
I know we've been pretty lucky on Mother, but alternate parking has started too, right? So I saw that note on the website and it's kind of towards the bottom. So.
Yeah. Get up at twelve o'clock and move your card.
Now that you said that, it is going to snow.
Yeah, exactly. I know what's coming.
All right. Communications and miscellaneous business, approval of vouchers.
Motion to approve vouchers is presented.
Second.
Motion and second to approve vouchers as presented. Was that you, John?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Correspondents, did we have any? Correspondents?
Yeah, I think they probably, I'm sort of, I should have given these to you. I'm sorry. I think everybody may have got these. I got a notice of opportunity to request a public hearing for the, basically the US twelve eighteen reconstruction. Did everybody swear to that? I don't know if that's something that, basically they're asking if we want to have a public hearing here.
That's like a shell just a budget.
This came in the mail just this week, I guess. So I don't know. There's a deadline. Did you get this, Matt?
Yeah.
So I don't know if we will want to have, I remember there was a presentation once on the Beltline study that they were working on. It was really cool. They were hijacking people's Bluetooths from their cars and counting them and all that fun stuff. It was a great presentation. But I don't know if there's any interest in this for the village.
Is, I'm drawn to believe, I guess, that this, what it specifically says, is it an invite to go to a public hearing?
It's an invite, it's my understanding, if I read it correctly, it's an invite to have one here if we won't.
I mean, it's up to, up to the board. We could put it on as an agenda item if we have a next meeting.
I, I don't know.
I'm sure if somebody was concerned, we'd be contacted.
I'm not sure how much influence we would have.
I know. Well, we don't have influence on the Beltline either. And they were here. So I don't know how that happened. I don't know if that's.
I think it was a courtesy.
Yeah.
You know, they reached out.
That's kind of what I felt that was.
The other one, I, probably everyone else probably got this too, the steel December tenth. I don't know.
Wednesday or Thursday?
We need to post for a, do you want to post for just a?
It's good. A potential forum.
Just for?
For Thursday, Steel, Deb, it's at ten.
Do you want for UW? I didn't get one from UW. Do we post?
I thought you did.
Pre UWs or the last opening?
Yeah, we did for UW.
You did for UW.
Okay.
Yeah.
And Steel was groundbreaking. You did for Steel's groundbreaking.
We did for that too.
Do you want this?
I don't know.
Okay.
On the floor, please. Thank you.
All right. Future agenda items.
I, I will come back with a report on appointing replacements or to take place of the, the president. And what procedure we should use with that. And then also hopefully the pure court report.
Okay. Anybody have anything else? Okay. That's good. Then at this time, I guess I will make the motion that the Village of Cottage Grove go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen point eighty-five, pair and one, pair and C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, administrator's evaluation process, and pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen point eighty-five, pair and one, pair and E, strategy, or referring to legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or likely to become involved. Cozy Kids Corral lawsuit discussed various legal matters and documentation arising from the Ru fields versus Village of Cottage Grove, thirteen CV one twenty-five P, and pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen eighty-five, pair and one, pair and E, deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public property, investing of public funds, conducting other specified business whenever competitive and or bargaining reasons require a closed session, negotiate terms for potential development in TID six by Horizon Development Group.
Second. Second.
Thank you.
I can't believe you're still talking.
How about that?
Did you read that again?
Yeah, do you want me to repeat that? No, that's all right. The real call.
Jack Hendrick?
Aye.
Alex, just issue?
Aye.
Jennifer Pickle?
Aye.
Harvey Potter?
Aye.
John Williams?
Aye.
Also, let me take a short break.